So everybody's presence, so. Welcome to Tuesday, October twenty first, twenty twenty five meeting. Please silence your cell phones, pagers, and other electronic communication devices. Agendas and speaker request forms are located at the back of the chambers. So if you feel one, if you want to speak, you fill one of these out, you bring it up to our commission director here, and he will make sure you get on this agenda to speak and talk about whatever you need to talk about, so. So first of all, we'll start with a moment of silence and reflection. We just want to reflect upon all the wars that are happening and that we could find peace, so we will have a moment of silence and we'll follow it by the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, folks, for hanging in there during the pledge. It's kind of a big deal as we, as Americans, people living in our country come together and unite, so. So we will start with a review and approve the agenda. So I'll be looking for a motion to approve the agenda.
So move, Mr. Chair.
Second.
We have a motion by Mr. Ross Connect, a second by Mr. Drews. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign, hearing none, motion carries on the consent agenda. And we do have a member of the audience that wants to remove A, B, and C. And if that, if that's not correct, is that all of them? Chad? That's all of them? A, B, and so we're going to remove A, B, and C. Any other ones that need to be removed?
Mr. Chair, I'd request that you remove item E.
E? So we request item E be removed, so A, B, C, and E will be removed, and they will be handled by themselves. Otherwise, we will handle them all with one motion, so. Any, any other? Looking for a motion to approve all but A, B, C, and E.
Mr. Chair.
Yes.
I've moved to approve D, F, G, and H on the consent calendar.
Second. We have a motion from Drews and a second by Haddock. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign, hearing none. We'll move on to item A and approve the minutes of the special budget hearing September twenty ninth, twenty twenty five. And Chad, you wanted to visit about this one? Chad Ellsworth, if you, and just state your name for the record, Chad, thank you.
Chad Ell, Chad Ellsworth, Rapid City. Good morning, commissioners. I'm asking for the removal of these items due to being a controversial and nonroutine matter. Each one of these, and I'll address them one by one, are together, are, contain a executive privilege, executive meetings that were held. Executive meetings under one twenty five two do require that any official action concerning the matters pertaining to that section shall be made in an open official meeting. And further, it's restricted to the purpose specified in the closure motion. I have noticed that there's been absolutely no official action on any of these, A, B, and C. There is action, however, that was noticed, and I'm bringing to your attention, that would interfere with the TIF election, which I'm a petitioner. On nine twenty eleven, that's not a date, that's a code, law code, the date of the election, the referendum petition was taken, there was altering and preempting effect by the, this, this panel through the auditor to breach the duty to certify that ballot election on that, and that clause is nine twenty eleven point two. We feel that that action taken would, that would delay the election past November eleventh does, does qualify as an action that you have not reported, and has caused us to come forward to, to tell you that within that, within that action, if there is no election held by November eleventh on the TIF election, that there will be enforcement by us, and we have, we have the right to enforce this through our inherent rights in the, in the Constitution, and that would be to minimize or delete your rights under section ten, twelve, eight, your right to levy in this county. Thank you.
Chad, I just got, I don't understand what you're saying.
We feel, we feel that.
The election's been, we put off the election for no reason.
There was a duty during that election period of time where you had these meetings in secret, that action was taken.
We actually publicize our meetings, we actually take a vote up here, and then we go, when we go to the executive session.
These are the secret sessions.
They're not secret. If they're in executive session, they're private under the law of eleven twenty five two, or whatever it is, so.
Yeah, under one twenty five two.
When we come, we don't make any, usually contractual, it's only personnel contractual or legal, that's it.
Her act to deny certification of that election during the time that you were pulling these, these executive sessions is an official act.
It had nothing to do with that. We never met about that.
Okay, I'm arguing that, that it's an official act, it's on you. It's not on the five thousand people that came forward to ask for that election, and under the terms of that election, November eleventh was the time they were going to meet. It was delayed because your auditor told them that.
She wasn't going to do it. It's because she's not going to be here.
I'm sorry?
She's not going to be here. She has put in her, she's retiring.
That's some sort of argument that you're making today. During these secret sessions, during the time, I'm, I'm saying it's serious. It's serious.
Okay, if you're going to make an allegation against us, obviously you could file a complaint, and we could go after it there, I don't know, because I didn't, what you're talking about doesn't make sense to me.
I'm filing my complaint right now to you. I'm filing right now. I have a right, I pay taxes here, I have a right to deny your right to collect taxes when you're not servicing, when you're not, when you're interfering with that, and that interference is a serious matter.
Sure.
Thank you.
Thank you. Was that, Chad, was that all of them you want to talk about? A, B, and C, all three of them?
Yeah.
Okay, perfect. So we have a motion on the floor?
Mr. Chair.
Sure.
I still got to talk on item E.
Pardon?
I still have item E that I'd.
Oh, I'm sorry. We, okay.
So item E, it's just the, thanking the volunteers that assist the county in various functions, emergency management, extension, sheriff's department. I just, this time, I just want to personally thank them for their service and the duties that they perform for the county as volunteers.
We appreciate that Commissioner Ross Connect, probably handles more than a, than a consent item, I guess, in the future.
Well, I do a thank you, but I don't know if we got a hundred cards, that'd take a little bit.
I think I did sign about a hundred of them, so we appreciate all the hard work.
You'd have to sign every one of them, you understand.
So we can, you want to handle them all at one time, A, B, C, and E?
That'd be my motion to approve A, B, C, and E on the consent agenda.
I have a motion from Haddock and a second by Ross Connect. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign, hearing none, motion carries. We will move on to item seven, items from the public per one twenty five one. Speaker request form is required. Action will be not taken on this section on any issues brought forth that are not properly noted. Speakers under this section will be recorded in a minute by name and interest, and we back our, our three-minute clock here, so we hope that you can abide by that at the best we possibly can to keep your comments within three minutes, and we'll try to keep ours limited also. So I have a couple speaker request forms. First of all, there's a Patrick Green, is that correct? Breen? I'm sorry, is it, is, it's, I'm, can you read it?
Yeah, I apologize, arthritis.
Okay, it's not worse than mine, so.
Yeah, it's Breen, like the color green, but Breen.
Okay, thank you.
I'll try to make this brief. I'm a longtime resident of Silver City, part of the community for sixty-two years, and have lived there full-time for thirty-two. Last night, I was watching one of your videos on agenda item that was on October seventh regarding the road, St. Joseph's particular, if you remember. I thought maybe I'd stop in and just give a little bit of clarity about that road, having the history I have with the community, and some of the communication I had with your previous superintendent of the highway department, Joe Miller. That communication started in two thousand and thirteen when I wanted to move the trail, it wasn't a road, it was a trail. I have some photographs from slide presentations, if you wanted to see them, that I did with the commissioners at that time in two thousand and thirteen, showing that it was just a trail, and the trail actually went onto my property. And so I was requesting and was talking with Joe multiple times, how can I get the trail moved over more to the center of the right-of-way? He said he couldn't do anything about it, but I could, being a private citizen, if I met their standards, and I'd have to come in front of the commissioners, so I did that, and a couple different presentations, PowerPoint, et cetera, and you allowed me to meet the criteria, twelve foot wide, with a proper slope, and three inches of gravel. So I just wanted to bring that up because there seemed to be in the video last night some, by the commissioners, not really knowing the history and understanding that St. Joseph Street. It was always, and in all the communication I have with Joe Miller, classified as an unmaintained road. In sixty-two years, it's never had any gravel put on it, it's never been maintained, and any gravel, and the misunderstanding I want to clarify, any gravel or the road you see there between Sherman and Dugan, which is the main center part of St. Joe, I built, and I put the gravel down. Before that, it was just a simple dirt trail, like it is on the far east side of Main Street currently, that's a dirt trail, and that's what St. Joseph was, and if you take St. Joseph to the, to the east right now, where the petition was filed by the couple different property owners up there, it is still just a trail. My personal feelings on that, if I, you know, articulate in kind of the history there, not viewing it as something that was neglected by the county, the highway department, and that they haven't been maintaining, and it never was, and what was, is there now is done by private owners. Now, we also, on that stretch of road, to give you some perspective, might sound, might surprise you, I'm not here to ask you to do anything, I'm asking you to do nothing. We prefer it to be unmaintained, we don't want it to be a road. Although homeowners along that stretch actually would like to see it abandoned. I vacate it, as the word would be. I've actually sat down and tried to talk with the planning zoning and the county attorney, if that's possible. So I only say that in, in perspective of we as homeowners along there, we do not want that improved, maintained.
Did you wrap it up, Patrick, and then your three minutes is up, so if you can wrap up?
Okay, I'm done.
Thank you. Different perspective for us to.
Patrick, Patrick, could you get some of that information to Jordan here?
I can give you these printouts here, and you can go back to two thousand and thirteen, if it's still on file, and see my presentation or see the PowerPoint that was provided.
Thank you, Patrick.
TJ Smith, are you here?
Yeah.
You're next, please, sir, just, when you come forward, if you get, give your name for the record, and you'll have three minutes to speak.
Yes, name is TJ Smith. I also am a long-term resident of Silver City. I've lived there close to thirty years now. I have two properties there, I have a home on Main Street, such as it is, gravel street, and I also have a piece of land on St. Joseph, right next door to the Donahues, which are on the far, far east end of the street. And I'm basically here to, to piggyback on the, on the, on the back of what Patrick just said, is that we, we really don't want a, a developed street. We would like to keep it to a minimum for multiple reasons. One is traffic, and we seem to, where the past several years, get more and more and more ATV and UTV traffic in our little town, and they all seem to be lost, and they don't know where they're going, and they race down every single street and treat it like an amusement park, and if you make the streets wider and more improved, that's only going to get worse. At one of your previous meetings, and I, like Patrick, watched it on video, we were talking about gravel, and you had mentioned that, yeah, gravel is a, is a transient thing, it's a temporary thing, it doesn't last very long unless there's a proper roadbed. Our biggest problem on that street is gravity and water, and the gravity is, is bringing the water down the hill and washing out the area that was mentioned by the Donahues, and causing a lot of problems in their portion of the street. But myself and others would prefer to take that into our own hands. If the county road crews can help to get us in a little better shape, and then we worry about it after that, that would be fine. I am slowly developing the lots I have on that, on that portion of the street, and have stopped where my driveway will intersect with the current St. Joseph Street because I'm not sure what to do. If it is under county jurisdiction, then I have to go through them. If it's not, and it's vacated, then I can do what I think is proper and help my neighbors. I want to be a good neighbor and have a good, good access to our homes, but don't want it to become a racetrack for ATVs and UTVs and you name it. So that's about all I have to say.
Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Don.
Commissioner Ross Connect.
Some of the things that we discussed and our highway department recommended was to let the folks of Silver City form a road district, and we're talking about maybe looking at incentives to start road districts, but then that would be in your hands, you can buy your gravel at county cost, county can assist. I think we just soon not put the gravel down. We offered that because we were trying to find a solution for the folks that were here at the last meeting, but personally, I would say that our highway superintendent would just soon not have to put the gravel down. We don't feel that's really is a road or a street that should be maintained by the county. We do recognize that we do have to do service from three eighty-five to Silver City, and I think it's up Sherman Street, if I recall.
Correct.
But I think we'll do, talk to highway one more time, but I would highly suggest somebody step up and start a road district. We would fully support that, and then that would be in your hands, and hopefully you could control those side-by-sides.
Yeah, I, I can see with some certainty, there are several of us that wouldn't even want a road district, because in, in one of the last meetings, and it was, I believe it was you, Mr. Dur, that, that mentioned that many road districts that are started, start out with very good intentions. They don't have financial backing, or they don't have the will of, of the folks that are there, and it can turn into a big conflict and actually make things worse.
Gave you a little bit of latitude here because I understand if, if you have questions on your properties, and if you get with planning and zoning, they'll work with you on figuring out what you can and can't do over there, I think, and then about the road, we could have that conversation again, because as Commissioner Ross Connect pointed out, we want to do just the minimal and, and, and just let it go. So, thank you, sir, have a great day, and we got another speaker request form?
Thanks.
Rita Chapman? Rita, are you in? Okay, and if you just want to state your name for the record, and then, thank you.
Rita Chapman, I also have, actually, two properties. I have a two hundred and fifty feet of the, twelve hundred feet of Silver, of St. Joseph Street. I just wanted to support the other two speakers, but we do want to be part of the future dialogue, just so I kind of know, we were kind of, we weren't blindsided by any means, but we didn't know that this had been part of the agenda item for next November meeting, so we are going to be here for the November meeting, so we would like to be kept in the loop for future things that happen with St. Joseph Street. And yes, we do have our own little things going on, there's a cabin entirely built in the right-of-way, there's a holding tank currently in the right-of-way. I know that my property is specifically involved, that it was built in nineteen forty-eight, and we have a gray water drain field totally in the right-of-way. So there is lots of things that need to be considered when, if a road is actually going to be widened or improved. And then I have a question, when we do pay, we do pay a tax for an organized, unorganized road, what does that do?
That's an organized road tax, it just.
So that goes, so.
Yeah.
So we're just paying for the road to get plowed to Silver City.
Get to where you're going.
So everybody pays that, no matter what? No, every property, all, every, no one's ever exempt from that? Okay, that's what I was wondering.
Unless they're in a road district.
I can just make a comment that there's no, there's no thought of widening the road, that consideration was taken in, that we, we're trying to do the minimal we can just to help you guys to the point where, then it's, then we're done, the county's done with that, so.
Okay, so then where does the unorganized road tax go to?
Director Need wants to chime in on that.
We can, we can talk about this offline, but really quickly, the unorganized road tax is taxed on any properties outside of a municipality, or a road district, or a sanitation district that manages roads. So it's unorganized territories, and it goes to any road that is in an unorganized area, it's for unorganized road maintenance throughout the county.
Okay, thank you.
That help you a little bit?
Yes, thank you.
I don't want to give you any anxiety, we're just trying to, we're trying to keep that road open to the Moonshine Gulch, and that's the most important road for us.
Mr. Chair. Say Rita.
You did a good job with that. Thank you.
Send me an email with the, with the concerns of the three of you that spoke. I'll send it to Joe, I'll get in the loop, and just make sure that everybody's communicating with everybody.
Thank you, that'd be great.
My email address is on the county website.
Got it.
I'll be looking forward to it.
Any other questions?
No.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, have a good day. Does anybody else from the public want to say anything or speak while we have public comment open?
I'm on the list.
Pardon, are you, you're on the public comment? Well, come on forward, James.
You did have public comment, I'm sorry about that, James. I apologize.
James Byalata, I am here today to talk about a few things. And you know what, I'm good at calling out people that did something wrong, but today I'm going to call out Commissioner Dur for doing something right about the road district in Silver City. Now, there's certain things that the county has an obligation to do, and some things they're restricted by law from doing, and one of those is forcing residents to remove a organized road from county maintenance and turn it into a road district. It's illegal for you to do that by law, so please, don't ever suggest to the community to break the law, that you're going to break the law. Now, if the residents want it limitedly maintained, more the better for you, but you do have a duty to do it, and I would suggest you get on that duty before they hold you in violation. Like Chad said, you're taxing people and you're not providing the service, they can go after you. The other thing I want to talk about what Chad said is, number one, you are holding secret meetings. I already heard it from everybody in town that you already picked your nomination for auditor today. How could that be if you didn't meet and talk about it? Because there's certainly no minutes of it, and everybody's sick of it. Executive session has limited functions, you can't take everything you want in there willy-nilly, and when you come back with the decision, that decision is required to be on the public record, and you guys are hiding it. So I'll be looking at real closely who you pick for auditor, because you certainly don't want me, because I know what to do with the books, and you certainly don't want me opening your budgets and finding out where all the missing money is. So I'm just wondering if you're going to pick the person I already heard you're going to pick, and if that's the case, and three of you voted on it, that means you had a quorum, and you illegally talked about it outside this chamber. Let me make that clear. If you held a secret public meeting, the entire community will have at you. And we already know who this person is. Thank God, the people you talked to are more honest than you guys, and we're going to have at it. We're done with the BS, and I think, you know, I'm on the agenda for talking about the auditor, but I'll give you a little taste now. Everybody should know that you went to the executive session to talk about a criminal complaint about the auditor. What a wonderful time to retire while you're facing criminal charges. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Blotto. Just for the record, we have not voted on a new auditor. Anytime we go to an executive session, we are covered by law, and I don't know where these conspiracy theories come about, but they, we're more than welcome to check us out anytime. We, we've been down that road, there's been some issues with executive session meetings, we've cleaned that up, so that's not an issue. We haven't voted for anybody. May note, my comments to the newspaper was we were vetting people, have no interest in, you know, we haven't voted for anybody. If we do that, we'll do it publicly, and everybody will know, we'll be transparent, so. Moving on, any other, anybody else want to speak? Or did I miss somebody? Ma'am?
A lady.
Were you in public comment then?
Yes.
Okay.
I filled out a form. Hi. Thank you for having me, I'm Beth Breckis.
Thanks for coming.
And I'd like to comment just on support for our public libraries, and just wanted to draw, bring attention to the funding reductions for Rapid City Public Libraries from the four hundred and seventy-five thousand to the proposed eighty-one thousand. I guess the budget is actually final, and it does result in mill levy savings of twelve dollars per hundred thousand dollar house for people living outside of the city limits, Pennington County residents, and it'll bring that down to three dollars per hundred thousand dollar house value, but just wanted to point out all the great things that the libraries do. I mean, they, we have summer reading programs for kids, we have Custer State Park passes that people wouldn't be able to afford, that they can check out, the Libby app for all the online books that you could want to read, you can check out up to a hundred books at a time. There's great programs for people of all ages. I went to the Paul Horstedt, Then and Now presentation, capacity limits. There's just amazing things that the library's doing, and wanted to point out also that in the last year, the county provided, I believe, eleven percent of the funding, but actually accounts for twenty percent of the usage, and those are twenty percent usage, those are people outside of the Rapid City limits. So in the last quarter alone, we had over six thousand usages of those people, I think thirty thousand odd people that live in the county but not in Rapid City, and it's significant with the funding cuts, it'll actually be less than two percent of the funding that's proposed for twenty twenty-six. So just wanted to bring that to the attention, that those cuts impact all of us, so, and they're going to be, you know, what's proposed will be very real, and I don't know, I mean, I know in nineteen ninety-eight, there was a public vote, and the citizens voted to keep funding our libraries, and I realize that the view is that the current proposal meets the fund, meets those requirements based on that election, but I don't know if it meets the spirit, just based on, you know, our, all of the residents in Box Elder and in Rapid Valley, Johnson Siding, you know, area along Neck Yoke, I mean, all of your areas that you all, the people that you represent.
Mr. Chair.
Yep, Commissioner Ross Connect.
You know, if I had to do the vote again, I'd probably do something different. I really didn't sleep very good after reading the letters and the comments, and then really getting to understand, I've never been on the library board, but I've really been reading and taking the heart, the letters that I got, and the function that the library plays in Rapid City, and granted, we, we had a tight budget, and we had to do some things, but if we had that vote again, I would probably recommend something different. I did advocate for a couple other service organizations, if we're going to cut them, let's do it in baby steps. I think that was a relatively big shock, so just wanted to share that with you, ma'am.
Thank you, and I do realize the library is unique, and that it is. Thank you. And I do realize the library is unique in that it is funded by the levy. Or there is, you know, the levy, so it's probably unique from the other departments. But I appreciate that.
Absolutely. Just for anybody that wants to know, we are in negotiations with the library. We will probably be making a decision to either move on with that contract, or, or cut that contract today. But at some point, we will be, we are still negotiating with the library on it. There's a little bit difference in the county and the city. And city receives a lot of tax dollars from sales tax, limited amount of property tax. Sales tax is also generated from outside the city into the city. And so, some of our perspective is that we work together on some of these things, and realize that the people, the, the people that are outside the city contribute a ton of money into the coffers in the city. And so we're trying to figure out how that balance all works. So, we appreciate your thoughts. And like Commissioner Roskin said, and honestly, I, I didn't vote for it, but that's beside the point, but we as a commission did. So, thank you, and we'll move on to that. Does anybody else have anything to say? We're letting you all in today, so, I just, it's important. Frank, how are you doing, man? Frank's from the newspaper, if anybody wants to know that. So, reporting for the Rapid City Journal, so. Jordan?
Yeah, go ahead.
Okay.
We'll move on.
I think we'll move on to items from equalization, right? And Shannon, you just want to state your name and your title, so the people that are watching, or the people in the audience know who you are, and then we'll let you have the floor, sir.
Good morning, Commissioners. Shannon Rittberger, Pennington County Director of Equalization. I've got a PowerPoint presentation for you over a few different subjects. Waiting for Jordan to pull that up, and I appreciate his help with this.
Knowledge, you gotta love it.
For the record, Shannon doesn't allocate tax dollars. He just does assessments.
I appreciate that.
I know. Sometimes the messenger gets beat up.
Yes, my office is an office of appraisers.
It's nice to see a lot of people here today. Appreciate that. Everybody taking some time out of their day to...
Act a little bit, so if you want, I can pull them up as you're talking. If it works for you, because I don't know if this is going to be voted in private.
We have to do that, wouldn't you?
Is that okay?
Yeah, it's all right.
So, I'll just go from here.
So, we're going to improvise.
Yep.
Oh, Jordan is going to have the clicker. All right, I appreciate this opportunity here. So, I've got a couple of different subjects I'm going to go over here. One is a review of the, the bill that passed the legislature last year. It was called Senate Bill 216, I think it was called the Governor's Bill, and the impact it had on property assessments and taxes. There's a summer study that is meeting, has met this summer, and they're going to meet tomorrow. I'm going to review what they've done. And then, off of those subjects there, talk about what's required to be an appraiser in the Director of Equalization's office. Jordan, next slide, please.
Okay, so I'm going to start with Senate Bill 216. And I call it Senate Bill 216, but it, it passed the legislature, so it's not one statute. There's multiple statutes, but it's, it's not a bill. It passed the legislature. So, the biggest thing, the most, the most well-known change that, that people are talking about, is it put a cap on the change in valuation of owner-occupied properties in the county. It capped the, the increase in value of the total valuation of owner-occupied properties. They can only increase by 3% from one year to the next. The sun sets in five years, but this next coming year, we will be looking at this 3% cap. It is important for everybody to know that it is not a cap or a restriction on the change of an individual property. Any individual property can increase or decrease by any amount. It is a, a 3% cap on the change in the total valuation of all owner-occupied properties in the county.
Mr. Chair.
Commissioner Roskin, sir.
So, I believe Representative Crowell, last year, with this presentation, would call this winners and losers. And the winners would be the ones that their assessed value went up 1%, and the loser would be the folks that their assessed value went up 15%. I mean, essentially, that's what this is saying.
I, I don't agree with your winners and loser statement, but yes, I, I remember that that was discussed last year. Yes.
I just want people to understand that if you live, let's say, at Johnson Siding, your assessed value could essentially go up 120%. And if you live in Caputa, your assessed value might go up 0.05%. Just so everybody's clear on that.
Absolutely, yes. So, we are still appraising property at market value, and if the market changes more in Johnson Siding than it does in Caputa, we, our appraisal will reflect that. But at the end of the year, once we have all of those values set, then we have to go back and look at the total valuation and see if it increased more than 3%. And let's, let's just imagine, the total valuation went up 5%. Then we go back and we cut 2% off of every property. So, that situation you just described would still happen.
Right. And I just want people to start getting their assessed values for next year. Just want everybody to be clear how this works.
Yes, absolutely. So, there are also some changes that affect the taxing entities. Right now, the county, the school, the city, any taxing entity can increase their levy request. The, the money they take in from property tax for their budget, it can be increased by 3% over last year, for the Consumer Price Index, whichever's less. And the taxing entity can increase that levy request by the amount of taxes that are paid due to new growth. And new growth is property that wasn't there last year, brand-new house that was built. Pennington County has, has had new growth of about 3% to 3.5% a year. So, Pennington County could increase that levy request by the 3% and 3, 3.5% for new growth. But this bill, that's now law, restricts that increase due to new growth to only 2%. And it redefines what new growth is. That house that was built last year, it's property that wasn't on the tax roll last year. That's generally what new growth is. But now, new growth is anything that adds value of 40% or more to the property value. So, a deck that is built onto a house is going to increase the value of that house. A garage that is built, if that garage is less than 40% of the total property value, it will not be counted as new growth. That garage, that deck, will still increase the value of the property. So, it'll still go on the tax roll. But the taxing entities will not be able to increase the levy request by those items of new growth that are less than that 40% threshold.
Shannon, I got a question for you, because you lost me on levy requests may increase by 3%. And then it says, or CPI and new growth. So, CPI is 2.9 and the growth is 2, that's 4.9.
Okay, go, go back. CPI is 2.9?
Yeah.
Okay. I don't, I don't know what CPI is this year.
I'm just, we're just using that for an example.
Okay, so, the, the taxing entity can increase their levy request. The, the request that they send to the county auditor, that we want this much from property taxes, that can be 3% or CPI. So, it can only be, you said, 2.9%. Okay? You can increase your levy request by 2.9%, but you can also increase your levy request by whatever the percentage of new growth is.
Okay.
Pennington County.
Potentially, if we use the numbers 2.9 and 2% for growth, then that could potentially be 4.9.
Exactly.
Okay.
Yep. What this has done is it has restricted the amount that a taxing entity can increase that levy request from year to year. It has, it has reduced what is considered new growth, and it has reduced that amount of new growth to a maximum of 2%.
Got you. And just for the record, for the people that are out there, this year's budget, we spent a lot of time, a lot of hard energy, a lot of elbow grease. We did not take the CPI. We just took the growth. So, in our budget revenue, so people understand that. Thanks. Just keep going, Shannon.
Okay. The, the last phrase there before Jordan changed that. Expect less revenue next year from those changes. Another change that that Senate bill did is it expanded what qualifies for the elderly assessment freeze. It increased the, the income limitation, household income, the maximum income of applicant had to be $45,000. That has expanded up to $65,000. And the maximum valuation of a house was $300,000. That is now expanded to $500,000. It did change the, the requirement that you be a resident of South Dakota from a year, now it's five years. But the, the expansion of the income and the valuation of the house, we're going to see more people qualify for the elderly assessment freeze. I expect significantly more people are going to qualify for this.
Shannon, and I don't mean to regress, but in the conversation, you talked about owner-occupied. This is owner-occupied only?
Yes.
So, non-owner-occupied still pay more, correct? They pay whatever they're paying now? Nothing changes?
Nothing changes with that, yes.
Okay.
Yeah.
So, if you rent a property, you, you pay a bigger share of property taxes than somebody who owns a property? Because the renter...
Because the levy is less for owner-occupied property.
Significantly.
The assessment, in my world, the assessed value is the same either way, but the levy is less for owner-occupied. And to qualify for the elderly assessment freeze, one of the qualifications is, is it has to be an owner-occupied property.
Okay.
Mr. Chair.
Sir.
Shannon, just what percent of properties out there are under this 65, 55 as presented up here of the total? What percent are we looking at?
I don't know the percentage, but I got numbers.
Okay, well, just, when the summer study's done, tomorrow's the last meeting, don't be surprised if that 65 gets increased to something larger than 65. Just, you know, as a, as a recommendation.
Yep, good. So, here's the number of properties that qualify for the, the elderly freeze for the last few years. In the last three years, we went from 409 properties to 478 properties. And the qualifications just expanded, so I expect that 478 to increase substantially. We're, right now, there's, for the 25 assessment, we have $54 million of property that is exempt or shifted to all of the other taxpayers.
I'm going to stop you for a second, because when you talk about exempt, are you talking about all the nonprofits too?
Nope, this is just for the elderly freeze.
Thank you.
Yep, the 478 properties, the valuations on those were reduced by 54 million. Okay? Does not include all of the other exemptions. That number'd be a lot bigger. Jordan? Okay, so we'll talk about the comprehensive property task, tax, task force. Jordan, the, the mission of the task force was to review state and local property tax systems to find lasting relief, perform a comprehensive review of property tax policy, and focus on state and local revenues and K through 12 education funding. So, where is the task force right now? Well, the task force hasn't done anything yet. They meet tomorrow, where we expect some action. But they have met several times through this summer. And in fact, they've met in several different locations across South Dakota instead of just Pierre. They were in Rapid City once. They have listened to the public. They've listened to a lot of different people. They are gathering information, and they are floating different ideas, and we expect something to happen tomorrow. The expectation is, is that they will vote on something or some things and make a recommendation to the state legislature, because that's, that's the purpose of the task force. So, really, tomorrow is the, is the big day.
Mr. Chair.
Commissioner Roskin.
So, I believe I saw an article in the Rapid City Journal just a couple days ago, where there, it sounded to me like the task force is, what their goal was, to reduce property taxes by 50%. I mean, if I read that right.
That wasn't the, the mission. I think that's what some members of the task force have said.
Okay, I just, I, I guess you can read it the way you want to read it, but that's the way I read it, and I hope people'd...
I, I've seen the same thing. You're right, that's been publicized. That just wasn't the mission.
I would complain, but I don't think it's going to happen.
I, I'd agree with you. Here is just a very brief summary of some things that the task force is looking at, okay? And this is just a brief summary. Governor Roden has a proposal that would allow the counties an optional half-percent sales tax, with that money being dedicated to replace part or all of the owner-occupied property taxes. Senator Melhoff has a proposal to increase the state sales tax, with that money being dedicated to property taxes that go to education and special education. Senator Fry Mueller has a proposal that is a constitutional amendment to replace all of property tax with a $1.50 flat tax on every financial transaction. There are several other ideas that the committee is considering that are a combination of, of these various actions: increasing sales tax, increasing the sin taxes on alcohol and tobacco, increasing tourism tax, tax on sugary drinks, removing some sales tax exemptions, and limiting the levy request of the taxing entities. There's a lot that has been on the agenda of this committee. I don't know what they're going to do. This is just a summary of the ideas they're looking at.
Shannon, do you sit on the committee, or do you just go, do you go to the meetings or just following it, or?
I, I have been.
Sure synopsis.
I'm, I've watched the ones that I haven't been to, and I'm planning to go tomorrow and see what happens here. So, no, I am just giving you a spectator summary of...
Thank you.
...of what's happened. They will make a recommendation. That's the expectation, that they'll make a recommendation to the legislature. Whatever they do, it's probably not going to be the only thing the legislature considers. We had a lot of ideas in last year's legislature. I expect this year to be the same thing. This could be a free-for-all for all kinds of ideas. Some of the, the ideas that the legislate, that the, the committee is looking at this summer, some of those individual legislators will probably take those ideas and take it to the legislature themselves. So, what I'm, what I'm getting at is, is whatever comes out of this summer study is probably not going to be the only thing the legislature looks at this year. Jordan? Okay, so I want to change subjects a little bit, talk about what's required to be an appraiser in the Director of Equalization's office. The official title for one of our appraisers is Appraiser-Assessor. And the state, I want to say state law, but I think it's administrative rule, requires that anyone that puts a value on property for property tax purposes be certified through the Department of Revenue. So, all of the appraisers in my office, as well as the director and deputy, have to have this certification. When a, when an Appraiser-Assessor is first hired, they are granted a temporary certification for a year and have to complete this in that first year. There's five online courses that they do in our office. There's quizzes on each of those courses that are graded by the state. They have to pass all five of those. There is a week school. It's called a basics class in that first year. They go to Pierre, and after a week school, they pass a... And, uh, after a week's school, they pass a test at the end of that. There is a two-day Uniform Standards of Professional Appraisal Practice class that has a test at the end of that. And then after all of that, there is a final overall certification test. Any appraiser that works in the Director of Equalization's office in any county in the state has to do all of this in the first year just to keep the job that they have. And then, uh, there is continuing education that is required. Uh, and it's on a five-year cycle. So, every five years, uh, you have to attend three week-long classes and pass a test at the end of each. Twelve hours of additional continuing education, attend three conferences, and another one-day Uniform Standards class. Uh, that has to be done throughout the career to maintain that initial certification. Uh, I will tell you that, uh, the staff that I have in my office, uh, go above and beyond this. Um, education is a good thing, uh, so any opportunity we have to, uh, to gain some education, we take it. And there's times, uh, where life situation gets, uh, gets in the way of attending that, uh, week-long class, uh, something with the kids, health reasons or something. So, we expect the appraisers in our office to start that five-year cycle this year and next year. And, uh, a- and you have to get those three out of five years, or you have a problem maintaining your job in our office. But our staff, uh, not only do they, uh, typically exceed this every five years, but they also are required to take progressively more difficult classes through their career. I, uh, I have this chart to just show you a comparison of some similar career fields. Uh, an independent, uh, appraiser and a real estate agent are on a two-year cycle. So, uh, our office is on a five-year. I, I do the math and I do the, the hours required per year, just dividing up the total hours by the, the amount of years. And Appraiser Assessor in my office is required to attend thirty-one hours of education every year. That's, uh, more than double what's required of an independent appraiser or a real estate agent. And then just for fun, I threw in that last line there, uh, an EMT in South Dakota. I have, uh, licenses in EMT in South Dakota, so I, I'm familiar with this. That's ten hours a year. A nationally certified, uh, EMT is twenty hours a year. Uh, I just threw that up as, uh, as a comparison.
Mr. Chair.
Thank you.
Commissioner Ross, connect on it.
I knew you were going to chime in. Go ahead.
Thirty-one hours a year, uh, can those be, a lot of those be done on Zoom without travel, travel expenses and whatnot?
Y- yes. Uh, and my appraisers, uh, what I said was, is they try to, or uh, we push them to take progressively more difficult classes. Every year, uh, the Department of Revenue puts on a school in Pierre or somewhere else in South Dakota. And if one of my appraisers has already taken the classes that are offered there, they will go looking for an online class. It's still a week-long class, even though it's virtual. They're still in class for the week. Uh, so we look at both to try to gain the better education.
Thank you.
I, I think it goes to the attestation when you're dealing with a whole group of people, an array of all these people are having confidence in your ability as a public figure, that putting in more time versus a independent, like, if I'm running my own business, I can make my own decisions. But when you're making decisions for a lot of people, you better make sure that you have a higher level of confidence.
That, that's the point of it. Higher level of confidence and trust.
Right.
Yes.
Because if I'm making my own business, I'm accountable for my own mistakes. But, okay, thank you. Does, did you have more?
Nope, that's it. Thank you very much.
Appreciate it and appreciate all you do. And I just want to say one thing, that the assessor, again, does not set the mill levy. Your assessment could be one dollar, and there's still going to be an X amount of taxes that's due. So, it's not all about assessments. It's just assessments used to apportion how much each person pays for taxes, okay? And I'm pretty proud of this commission up here for holding the line on their, on their budget this year. It was, it was, it was hard, and we're, we're not done. We're, we're going to continue holding the line, because the only real tax way you can save people tax money is quit spending their money. Don't spend their money, you know, uh, you know, we talk about the alcohol consumption. That's a big deal, and our jail is a huge part of, of, of what we, uh, spend. So, we're looking at trying to figure out how the people that drink alcohol, do drugs, whatever, can help participate in their own incarcerations. So, thank you, Shannon, for your presentation. It was very professional. We appreciate it.
I appreciate your comments. Thanks.
We do have-
I appreciate your comments. Thank you.
Well, I know you get attacked a lot about your assessments, and that's not what drives the, the tax base, of us up here making decisions for you people and everybody in the, you know, in the county, is what drives those assessments. So, every time somebody comes forward, wants more money, it's actually, we're taking your money and spending it for you. And we take that very seriously in this commission, and we're striving very diligently to do what we have to do and still provide services, so. And, you know, if we have to shift resources, you know, for funding resources, which we think should happen in the future, so. But any comments from the commission?
Nope, I just want to say thank you, Shannon.
Chair.
Think you're doing an excellent job.
Thanks, Commissioners.
Commissioner Hancock had something to say. I don't know-
No, I, I've been working with Shannon for a while, and I appreciate everything your assessors have done and do. And whenever I need them, they're there, and they come to the people's houses, our, um, constituents. And I appreciate that they do that on the, kind of like, in a couple of days, they'll be like, yeah, Deb, let's go. So, I appreciate that. I also appreciate, um, the bottom line, and you've always said it, it's about the budgets. You can say the levies, you could say, oh, I dropped the budget down to a certain thing. But, um, bottom line is, if you spend, school, city, and county spend more money, you're going to have higher property taxes. And this year, uh, at least three of us decided that that wasn't going to happen. Um, and based on the deficit from last year to this year, um, I'm pretty proud of what we did. And that was because of, we had Jordan and Kenner and some other people running those numbers that made sense and told the real story of what the bottom line was for Pennington County. And I'm going to thank the department heads as well. They held the line, and they helped us get this done. So, thank you for doing that this year, and thank you for bringing this up so people know the difference of why your, your assessments go up. Thank you, Commissioner Wifemack as well, because people keep saying different excuses. But if they sp- if you spend money and your budgets go up, city, county, and schools, your property taxes go up. That's your bottom line. So, thank you.
I have a speaker request form on this one for Mike. We'll, we're going to give you a few minutes, or Mike, if you want to come forward and, and try to keep it to eight A. I know you're involved in some of the, um, yeah, some of the, um, I don't know what you want to talk about. Go ahead. Just let us know who you are.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Um, Commissioners, Mike Mueller. Thank you, uh, also Director Rittberger for highlighting our plan that is an initiated constitutional amendment right now in the hands of the Attorney General. Um, he gave us a very good title and explanation. It's in the ten-day comment period. Um, our plan alleviates your elected bodies, yourself included, school districts, city councils, with a replacement revenue source. And it's a fear out there that we're going to not fund any of these political entities. There are thirteen in Pennington County that draw from property tax pools right now. Our treasurer, uh, we've met with treasurer and auditor, uh, state auditor, state treasurer, and they see no problem. This is a retail transaction tax. I think Shannon had financial transaction. It's a retail transaction tax added to the purchase before sales tax. It's separate from sales tax. It also offloads our communities, our taxpayers in South Dakota by about two-thirds of the burden. Two-thirds of this is picked up by, um, folks that visit us, by the counts of transactions that would be amassed. So, this is also equal to freedom, because when the assessments go up with the market, as they will, and they have in round, in the Black Hills for, for several years, you never know what your property tax, um, liability is going to be. I do appreciate this commission tightening up on the budget, because that drives the levy, as you said. Assessment can be X, but the levy is Y, and that equals your budget. So, anytime government's spending and having eighteen to twenty-one percent reserves leaves us some room, um, in Pennington County, not wanting to go below eighteen percent for the dry years. Maybe our visitors aren't coming as fast as they used to. Twenty-twenty had dropped off. Department of Tourism shows numbers over the years of, of, uh, how many folks came to visit and their fiscal impact. Last year, they put four hundred million dollars into the state and local sales tax coffers. So, you add all those transactions to a, up to a dollar fifty transaction tax, and you equate yourself to freedom, because you get to choose how you spend that money, and you don't have that ominous tax lien potential default. There's, there have been two hundred businesses in the state of South Dakota that defaulted on property taxes last year. There were twenty-three, I believe, individual tax liens in Pennington County alone. And, uh, some folks in the room keep tabs on that stuff. But, um, the threat for older people or younger people not to be able, be able to afford a home or stay in their home and have to sell because of the onus of, of a potential loss of income or fixed income, and property taxes going past what they can afford. We appreciate the highlight time. I will give you back the, the, uh, time and visit with you later. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mueller, for chiming in on that. I didn't realize it was on top of the, the sales tax, so that helps, un, help people understand. So, um, that being said, anybody else want to speak? No, we know the lawyers in the front. We'll hear you speak later, so.
I'll speak.
Did you want to speak, Tim? Real quick. We're going to give you a minute.
Equal time. Come on.
All right.
Minute's good.
If you could just tell who you are and-
Hey, Representative Tim Goodwin, District Thirty. I just wanted a couple of things. The last, uh, or Shannon's briefing had Senator Fry Miller. She is not a senator. She's a private citizen. Amber Hulse is a senator for that district. Uh, regarding, uh, the pending legislation, uh, it's really political who gets put on the property tax, uh, summer study. And like, I didn't endorse, uh, the Speaker of the House for governor, so I didn't get selected. And so that was, so that, that summer study has no bearing on what's going to happen during session. I can assure you of that. And the last thing is my bill, House Bill Ten-Sixteen, where it goes from four point two cents, the sales tax, to five cents. Other, that generates two hundred eighty million dollars in revenue. That's earmarked for owner occupied. And that comes out to four hundred and seventeen dollars per, uh, owner occupied house tax reduction per a hundred thousand assessment. So, if you had a five hundred thousand assessment, which sounds extravagant, but it's not that unusual now, you would get four seventeen times five, what, twenty, twenty-one hundred dollars, wherever that comes out to. And the part I haven't sold yet that I need to sell is return on investment. If every homeowner gets two thousand or so a tax reduction, the economy's going to boom, and it's going to be a five cent sales tax, and our revenues will be full and pure. But nobody can understand, can't see that far ahead. But I think that's the fairest way, and we could give homeowners instant relief, especially got people that are worried about getting taxed, other house, four hundred and seventeen dollars per hundred assessment would be huge, so. That's all I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Goodwin, and we appreciate that. And for the people that don't understand how politics work, is these committees and these things that they elect, these are people are non-elected officials. They go have a study and do this, and then they make a, uh, a, uh, you know, recommendation, and typically, those recommendations never are followed through unless the politicians want to skirt their responsibilities. So, that's really basically how that works in a, in a nutshell, but, uh, we'll move on to another item. So, thank everybody for participating. That's a big deal. So, items from the public defender, um, and have seen juvenile indigent defense. Hi, guys.
Good morning.
Thanks for looking forward.
I'm Jennifer Williams-Curl, the grant manager.
Eric, what's your public defender?
We are asking for approval to submit a grant through the OJJDP. That is the Office of Juvenile Justice and Delinquency Prevention. This would help us create some different strategies, uh, specifically related to juveniles that are being involved in the criminal justice and juvenile justice system. This would allow for, um, we could hire another case worker to specifically work on these juvenile cases, and I've talked to Eric, and there's over five hundred of them.
Yeah, if you add our abuse and neglect cases, as well as our juvenile cases, every year is a little bit different, but it's about five hundred per year for just those categories.
So, this would give us an extra person to see if, if we have more people working on it, are we going to see a better outcome? Uh, there is no match required with this grant. We could include any costs associated with hiring this person into the grant application. So, the background check, any technology needs, things like that, they would all be able to be covered by the grant so that it could be at no cost to the county. This would also get fifteen percent de minimis rate. That would help with covering the financial and administrative costs associated with administering the grant.
Mr. Chair.
Yes.
So, is that a three-year, uh, term?
Yep.
I know the question's going to be asked, or I assume it will be, that what happens after the three years and the grant, grant funding, uh, retires?
Yeah, so, what, what we would like to see would be having this extra person and seeing what changes with the juveniles that Eric and his team are working with. Hopefully, we would see a positive impact, and with that, we'd be able to, going into that year four, look for funding from the county to add that. And it might be changing some different things around within his budget, things like that. But the hope would be that having more people, we're making more impact, and we'd be able to try it, see if it works. If it does, we plan ahead. If it doesn't get us the outcomes that we want, then we go back to what we're doing now.
Okay, that makes sense. Thank you.
Chair.
Commissioner Hancock.
Number one, Jennifer, um, you're very good at what you do.
Yeah.
You can see by the grants and, and what has come in, and I can appreciate that. I also was on SB Seventy-three for the state, um, on juvenile justice. Um, so I'm not going to not vote for the grant. Um, and when it comes up, um, I don't know if I will, um, approve another person at that time. I need to do a little bit more research and based on evidence base a little bit more. Um, also adding more to the county. Some of these grants have added more people and increased a lot of areas that I think we have kind of overdone for, um, personnel in some areas. So, I'm not against this. I just need to do more evidence base for me to see where this is going to go. And also, um, do we need more people i- in that department? Um, we've been increasing a lot of areas in public defender and state's attorneys, not against that in one sense. But the other is, are we using our resources wisely, wisely? So, thank you.
Yeah, and in the example budget, um, there is one FTE in there, but a lot of the grant funding is going for, um, sub-awards, working with agent, like, other community groups that might be able to help impact, um, lifestyle changes and significant changes. There's also some training, so that we could do some training on how we're engaging with the juveniles, because the thing that everyone forgets is that juveniles and adults are different. The way that their brain works and the way that they process things is different. So, just doing a little bit more on that aspect to help the people that we do have working with the youth gaining some of that training too.
So, having that information before and then seeing what is done in the state's attorney's office with Kim and other areas, I think we have that covered in a lot of areas already, and why would we need it in public defender and otherwise? So, um, that's why I said I need evidence based on some of these grants and some of these things moving forward, because they do a wonderful job. I've also worked with, um, Joe Gutierrez in some areas and that as well, and other people in the community. So, I'll keep saying, if we have the resources in the community, do we need to add one more person in our, uh, county or in government doing that when we already have those resources that we can basically, um, bring in instead of adding another FTE? That's, that's why I mean by evidence-based. So, thank you. But you do a wonderful job. I can see from the grants, um, they pick the right person in different areas where we really, uh, need those resources. Thank you, Ms. Jen.
Uh, any questions? Commissioner, there?
Yeah, Mr. Chair. So, Eric or Jennifer, would these grand dollars fund an existing FTE? So, if we just had a change in duties and say you're going to pick up some of these responsibilities, would that offset the current personnel cost?
That would be supplanting.
And so, this is for a new hire?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. And so, kind of, you know, commenting off what Commissioner Hancock said, I believe that, you know, the county and others in the community, if you look at our public safety budget, you know, it's the, you know, it's over, what, fifty-eight, fifty-nine percent, sixty percent of our budget is public safety. That does not include Eric's office or the state's attorney's office. That's just our public safety and the jail, et cetera. So, uh, I'm not going to support- So I'm not going to support putting in for the grant because I can see what's going to happen down the road is that when you do get somebody in a position that you're going to look at the county taking that on. And I do believe that we have enough existing staff and funding and programming to handle some of these things. I'm not sure of the nuances related to your office, Eric, and you know, how this would be. You know, aiding in your office. I just know that we have a juvenile diversion program. We have many other things. We're contracting with Lutheran Social Services down at JDC to provide some, you know, services. And I just know that we have put a lot of effort into these things and a lot of tax dollars into it. And I would, I know I'm not going to support the FTE. So I'm not going to support the grant because if somebody else can use it, I don't want to say, yes, we get awarded the grant. And then some other entity that, you know, could have used it to miss that opportunity. So I think the county is too big on personnel. I still think our budget is too big and I'm not looking to add anything. So that's my comment.
I let me just kind of explain, you know, our vision of what this would look like just a little bit. So we have about 5,000 clients annually. And about of those, there's three to 400 juveniles that are facing a juvenile charge. And then about 100 150 abuse and neglect cases. We're really about looking at a family. What the criminal justice system is sort of learning over time is that when you have caseworkers that work in a public defenders agency, they meet with a defendant or a juvenile or a family really on day one and start sort of figuring out wraparound services that exist in the community. But those those systems are so incredibly challenging to navigate for folks that they just can't get inputted into those systems to start. Lawyers don't have time. We just don't. We have all these cases that we have to do. And our our top priority, of course, is always to handle the 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 charge itself. But oftentimes, what people really need is not just that legal representation on the charge, but also what is actually impacting their life? What is it substance abuse? Is it for juveniles oftentimes it's the entire family that there might be issues with. And what a case worker can do is assess what the issues are within the family. And then start interacting and helping them, whether it's driving them to appointments, getting them signed up, getting releases of information signed, getting them access into the into those points of services that already exists in the community. And so and with that, and some of that is going to be taking them to diversion and and other programs that are also available. So it's really providing just excellent services. I don't know that having the county fund this is is the definitive of what's going to happen at the end of it. There are other funding sources out there for this. I've been working with an agency called Partners for Justice with the go out and get private grants, not just federal grants, to get caseworkers to embed into into a public defender agency. So if we got this funding, that by no means means that the county would have to fund this in three years. And after two years, we start looking for a substitute funding source for it. The 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 challenge is is just trying to get, you know, the data that we need. Because I agree, we want evidence based programs. If it's going to, if it's something that is going to work, let's let's be able to prove that it works. What are the outcomes are we going to get? Why juveniles matter is because, you know, that brain development and they, as we all know, in our youth, this is our the time when we are the most impressionable. And what can what we can really see is when you're sitting across the desk from a young person who's 15 16 years old. If you can get on the right path at 15 or 16, the life trajectory is just dynamic. And so that the the most good that we can do oftentimes is in that age group. Once people are, you know, my age, I'm, you know, kind of a stubborn old goat, right? But when you get them at 15 16, you can really make some changes. So that's where I I would ask for the support of this. And by and I I understand that there like you may not fund this as and that'd be our job is to go out there and get a substitute funding. This is one area we we can actually get it. So I would ask for the opportunity. Just apply, we'll see if we get it.
Commissioner Drew, did you have something to say?
Sure. So Eric and Jennifer, I think I understand exactly what you're saying. I also have the concern of what happens at the end of three years. But if you're saying, Eric, that you think that there may be other funding avenues at that point in time? If you move forward with this and with the full knowledge that the commission is probably not going to be supportive down the road of funding a person from county funds for that particular purpose, I would support this. So thank you.
Yeah.
Mr. Chair, I'm going to go ahead and make the motion move to approve the submission of the OJJDP FY25 enhancing juvenile indigent defense grant application.
Sorry, I have a motion and a second on the table.
I want to order, there's public comment on this item.
Yeah, and I let him speak first.
Well. Yeah, I'm not going to call a vote anyway. But typically, if we make the motion, we can have conversation about that motion. So but in this, I mean, I'm not sure through Robert's rules of order, what would be the proper solution for that?
Take public comment.
Yes.
Take public comment, yeah. So but I'm not, there's a comment here too, so go ahead.
Okay, so.
And then we'll we'll get to you, James.
Now that you've explained that a little bit, I'll just tell you, being on SB 73, that's what they do. That's what they've done through the juvenile justice system, through the courts with JSE. So they have what's called a RAE program that has been very successful in risks. It's a basically stands for risk assessment. So they do that, plus they have different areas when they do have those risks, risk assessments where they work on. So by the time you get them, hopefully, as a having to defend them, you have the all that done, Eric. So.
Thank comment.
Why I'm saying that is just from seeing and being in that system and working with that system. They're basically doing what you're getting a grant for. So if they haven't done their job correctly by the time they that you have got them, is it our job to be social services to the child and make sure they're at the appointments and other areas? The main thing is the the child is getting the correct decisions being made based on his assessment of those risks. So by the time you get them, hopefully, you have it laid out for you. So. Um.
Hold on one second.
I'll I'll just tell you, Eric. It's not when you get them and do you have you have 5,000 cases, do you have the time to do that work? Hopefully, they have done that work for you. So by the time they get to the court, because a lot of times they have been in the court with these systems or with these children, to be able to make that difference from those assessments. And those assessments, from what I've seen, have been the best thing. And I think Liz, Liz who works for the court system actually came up with some of those ideas. So being on that committee, again, then it's changed my mind about moving this forward for a grant. Because again, Eric, if that's where you're headed, I think you already have a system that does that. And then if you're going to turn it into something different at the end, that is going to change things or or basically in the court system, do something different from what's already being done, that's a little bit different. But it sounds like you're going to be doing the same.
Okay, come, you go ahead, Eric.
Yeah, so the the RAE that you're discussing, that is does one thing. And that is makes a determination of whether they should be stay in JSE or be released. That's just a decision making process for the court system to say, are they going to be in the community or outside of the community in in a locked facility? That's all of that does. So there there that it doesn't assess all the other, it's a risk factor. So they might look at some of those things, but it in no way says, oh, this person needs the XYZ services. So it's it's a different thing.
They do a little bit of all with social services and other things. So it's not just the RAE.
Commissioner.
What happens in the JSE. So thank you.
She's got the floor, so okay. I'm going to ask a question to Jennifer that goes without saying here. Jennifer, can you come forward? Who hired you?
Sheriff and Chief Deputy.
And the commission would have to approve that? Basically.
Yeah.
Funding whatever for this position? And the reason we hired you is for what?
My expertise.
For grants?
Mm hmm.
Okay. So this grant that you're looking for now, is this giving you approval to input this grant in place?
This is just giving me permission to apply.
Okay, so it gives you permission to apply. So that gives this commission, because evidently I didn't spend enough time understanding all the ins and outs of this. So this gives you the permission to apply for the grant for the job that you were hired for? Is that correct? I mean, you were hired to bring grants to the county and then the commission would vet that grant to see if it made sense. See if we did have to replace this person after three years. I think there's been conversation about the metrics. What's the baseline here? What's the baseline that we would want from the the public defender's office to say, okay, here's where we're at? Okay, what are the metrics going to be till we can find out if this is even? Because what's happened in the past with some of these grants is they've actually done just the reverse. And then we had no way of getting out of it. And then we we ended up with a larger juvenile problem than we ever had before. And typical to some of the grants that were passed here that we accepted. But it's not fair to to shoot this down without even looking at it and saying, how does this work? How would we how would we monitor it? I think Eric alluded to the fact that the metrics and the evidence based is something that we haven't done in the past in a lot of programs that I've seen. And without that, you can't justify or even say, is this working or not working? To me, to to allow this to to go forward to say, hey, let's apply for it. And then let's find out before we pass it, we do accept it, we have to, it comes back to the commission?
Yep.
Okay, so we get another look at it and then we can actually have the reality of how this affects us. Because if it's something that has some negative side effects, is it something that may be given by an organization that we don't want to deal with? Which is what happened in the past with some of these grants that created the problem that we're in with these juveniles now because of the system that it kind of slapped their hand. It didn't really go after the true cause of why they were hitting there. Once they're already being prosecuted, the system and their families already failed them. So they're coming here. I think what this is looking for, I don't know without doing more research is we need to set up some metrics. And I would look for Eric to do that and say, here's where my baseline is with the juveniles I'm dealing with. Here's what my, here's how I'm going to benchmark my success. And then at the end of this program, if we did do it, then we would know, was it successful or did it fail? And then if it succeeded, if it succeeded, then we should look at other opportunities to fund this item. But just to throw throw this out without even taking a look at it, what I would say would be irresponsible for us and irresponsible for the taxpayers. But that's my opinion. We hired you to bring these things to the table. You're the messenger. We appreciate what you do. So that being said, understanding, where did James go? You I couldn't, James, you you want to chime in because you have a public comment? So.
Yes.
Um, we're ready for you to to bring forward your public comment. Because we're about ready to put a motion on the floor here, I think, so.
Yes. James Byalata, candidate for US House. Mr. Durr, again, you're on fire today. You know, I call it the way I see it. If you're bad, you're bad. If you're good, you're good. And today, you're great. So everybody's raised some great comments about this. Number one. When this grant goes away, they're absolutely going to keep the person. That's what they've done with every grant before. And they're not going to say, oh, by the way, we want to keep this person. You're just going to see their budget for personnel. And that's it. You're going to see a budget for personnel. They're not going to tell you that this person is, oh, we're specifically keeping this person from the grant, just so you know. This is what they've done every time. This is what they did in the MacArthur Grant. The MacArthur Grant is still costing us a million dollars a year in labor. You talked about Liz Hasit. Guess how she was hired? The MacArthur Grant. And what did that do to us? And what is it still doing to us? I can tell you right now, I confirmed videoing a member of the public who admitted to being arrested or detained for assault and public intoxication. And what was done? They took him to the care campus where he was allowed to leave. No arrest, no report, did not enter the justice system. It's a scam. And this is how they're cooking the books on the law enforcement numbers, telling the public, hey, crime's down. No, crime reporting is down. This is hilarious. So this grant appears to be, at least from the federal government, unlike the MacArthur Grant, that people in this county are still swearing to follow. Like I just mentioned. The other thing we're going to have to talk about real fast is if the public defender's office and the state's attorney's office is going to have any money left. I have just discovered through my journalistic expertise that they had ex parte communications with the presiding judge to affect thousands of cases that they don't represent.
Are you are you talking about this particular item? We're talking.
Yes, I'm talking about the public defender.
Well, you're talking about this public.
No, I'm talking about these grants that they're using. Yes.
Stick to the the.
I am sticking to the point.
Okay.
You got to let me talk.
Okay.
I want my time back.
I'll give it back to you. Not a problem. I just wanted.
That's fine. We got 30 seconds.
No, 15.
What a shyster.
I am, I can't help myself.
So the public defenders with the state's attorney, with the presiding judge, with a member from the Attorney General's office, are having secret meetings about these grants and how to treat cases in their totality. They cannot do this. It's ex parte communications and it's forbidden by law. And they affected thousands of cases. And I'm glad there's attorneys here because I'll give you all the information. And every public defender or private defender is going to have a piece of this county's butt when they're done. Thank you.
Do you want to vacate your rest of your time? You still got a few seconds.
I'll vacate.
Okay, thank you. Um, okay, so we have a motion on the floor or we.
I made the motion, it was seconded by Commissioner.
Let's do it all. We're going to start again. So a motion from Ross Connect to approve.
Approve the submission of the OJJDP FY25 enhancing juvenile indigent defense grant application.
Thank you.
And I second it.
And a second, so we have a motion from Ross Connect, seconded by Drew's. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay, opposed, same sign?
Aye.
So we have two noes. Motion carries three to two. So. We will move on to item. Number 10. Item from Buildings and Grounds. Just want to tell us who you are.
Yep, good morning, Commissioners. Davis Purcell, Director of Buildings and Grounds for Pennington County. Again, I bring before you the 14 St. Joseph Street property. We do have a another letter of intent from Elevate that I have included in your packet. Just for some background, this property has been surplus by the commission already. We are looking at potential sale to Elevate and School of Mines. And they are both in attendance here and they're going to come up and talk in just a second. We purchased the property back in 2023 for roughly 4.4, 4.5, somewhere. It's right in between 4.443 and we have about 5.4 into the building in total. We did get a appraisal done by Simpson. And that appraisal come back, came back at right around 5.1 million. And again, I would urge the commission, it's it's very difficult to get the president of School of Mines and Tom Johnson from Elevate here at the same time. So as we go through these discussions, we are able to negotiate. We can go into executive session briefly. I know we have a loaded agenda. There's a lot of people here. But after they present what they want to present, I would urge that we go into executive session to see if we can come to some sort of agreement on price. So I'm going to bring up Brian Tandy and Tom Johnson from Elevate.
Gentlemen, you guys have the floor.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman and members of the commission. This represents sort of two things that we're working on at the same time. Want to give you a little background on those as quickly as I can. So you've all, I presume, have heard of the Innovation District that we have got a plan presented for to the community that runs from Fifth and St. Joe's to School of Mines, back to Elevate Rapid City's incubator, the David Lust Accelerator Building, back to Fifth and St. Joe's. So there's this Innovation District that we hope in the next five to 10 years results in more jobs, more folks living in downtown, more walkability in this and along this St. Joe's Court or this building represents something that we would hope to try to get into and put into productive use for that Innovation District. Second, we are working with the Governor's Office, the Governor's Office of Economic Development, Senator Round and Senator Thune's office, in addition to the South Dakota School of Mines. And Brian will talk about that in a moment. On what we would call a national defense kind of cluster or framework, we think this facility might just be perfect. What we're trying to do with those organizations to create more of a. uh, to create more of a, a national security center. In the Black Hills, we have several sectors, autonomous vehicles, um, critical minerals. We have firearms. We think we can wrap that around the actual national security and make uh, the Black Hills a place where we can get dollars in research uh, through the South Dakota School of Mines and through this building uh, to make this a, a sort of a hub of national security for the nation. So we see this as a national security issue, part of Innovation District as well, and we think it'll be good for the downtown and the community. Uh, with that, I would turn it to Dr. Tandy to talk about specifically what uh, he plans on maybe doing with this facility.
Thanks, Tom. Um, Tom summed it up very well. Our vision for this building is it, for it to facilitate industry partnerships with our faculty and students. And again, we want to support the concept of the Innovation District, and I think this is a, a really critical step towards that vision. Um, we, we see national security as, as an industry that has a lot of potential to grow, not only in terms of employment and jobs for our students, but also in terms of partnerships and projects for our students and faculty on campus. And so this could be a really key facility to, to facilitate those partnerships and incorporate our academic programs into a number of industry projects. And so that's, that's the vision that we see and, and uh, ask for your support on that. Thank you.
Thank you. Um, do we have questions from the commission?
Chair.
Yep.
Tom, um, so I started working with the downtown when I was on the city council. How long have we been looking at the Innovation District? And moving forward and what kind of things with uh, your company of Economic Development have you changed in order to make that a success? Because I know there's some stuff going on with property meld and others, but I don't know all the information. Um, so the public knows it's not just nilly willy. This has been going on for a while and it doesn't, just hasn't had um, School of Mines involved in this.
Mr. Chairman, Commissioner Hancock, uh, to answer your question, I think we've been working on this uh, ever since I arrived in the community almost six years ago. Uh, in earnest for about four years, uh, we were able to secure about $500,000 of funding for the plan uh, which has a draft and it's, it's almost final at this point. In that plan, the entire east side of downtown has specific corridors. This corridor has been identified as a critical uh, to the corridor from downtown to School of Mines to make it more walkable. Uh, but also connect campus. So pushing campus as far west as we can. Yes, and then pushing downtown as far east as we can so the two meet. Uh, for, for a long time, uh, the School of Mines and downtown haven't had as much connection as we're trying to see here. Uh, we've been working on that for about four years. We're currently looking at several companies uh, that are looking at uh, coming to the Rapid City area that we think could be critical of this. One is an aerospace company uh, that is from Colorado. Another arm, another is a firearms manufacturer out of Colorado. All the regulation in Colorado right now is pushing a lot of those firearms manufacturers out of Colorado. We're also uh, in earnest, looking at a gunsmithing school as well to put into the area. We think this all kind of correlates around this district. What we really think we can do is get some of those dollars from, from R and D uh, through Dr. Tandy's organization and through School of Mines to really put into this specific facility, facility, so it becomes sort of a center of excellence where we have industry partners. So you have uh, university, industry, research, all going in at once. And we've been working on that ever since Dr. Tandy's been here as well.
Thank you. Um, why I'm saying that is, um, people need to know not only has Tom and the Economic Development been working on it, but Mr. Tandy is new and did a speech and I'll keep saying about his speed about, speech about being innovative and working with Western Dakota and other areas besides just the School of Mines. And moving uh, not only the School of Mines forward, but uh, Rapid City forward. And that's why I like the innovation and talking about the Innovation District is, um, Mr. Tandy, or Dr. Tandy, sorry. He always tells me, just call me um, Brian, but um, why I said that is I wanted to see what his, basically his vision was for Rapid City. And out of all the presidents, and then we've had some really good ones, I like the innovation that he takes in that we are not special, we are part of. When he does, talks about community. And that's huge for me. Um, and why back in the day when we wanted to sell this or wanted to buy this building, that I wasn't in favor of it because the Innovation District and what that goal was, was, and I was on the city council when we started doing um, and talking about the heart of our city was the downtown. And that the, the west side of Fifth Street was well taken care of with all the businesses and the different things that they were doing, but we had to do something different on the east side. And with Ray Hillenbrand, his vision and Dan Tribby and the School of Mines, um, at this time, we're bringing that vision forward. And that's why it's important for this building and why it was important back in the day for this building to be part of the Innovation District. And that's why I'm pushing it. And also, again, I probably wouldn't have pushed it as hard if I wouldn't have seen um, the vision of what Mr. Tandy was doing as well. And not only, I'll keep saying, he wasn't thinking of School of Mines. He was thinking of um, Rapid City and what that would do for all people, whether you're a School of Mines student or not. So um, that's why I think it's, it's just a good vision from Economic Development and the people and the mayor and, and people of Rapid City.
Commissioner Ross Connect.
No, I, I, you know, I'll support the Innovation District. I just won't support this number that you guys proposed. And the reason why is because that property is owned by the taxpayers of Pennington County. And it's our duty to get the highest dollar amount for that property that we possibly can. If we were to pay 4,751,800 and we took out the value of the land and Mr. Simpson agreed that land's worth $25 a square foot, that leaves a residual of $85 a square foot for the building. You can't build a garage today for $85 a square foot. So I can agree. I, I agree on the intended use, but I can't agree on that uh, dollar amount because I represent the taxpayers of Pennington County and I think we're doing them short by agreeing to that.
Chair, if I may?
Yeah.
Um, response to that, there, in the memo, I stated, this is merely a starting point. And this is why, this is why?
Just wanted to share my thoughts.
Well, and this is why I'm urging the commission that we need to do our due diligence here and go into executive session and, and hash some of this out. Um, I've been trying to put this together for months now, as you guys know, and we do have the people here representing. Uh, and we are able to do some negotiation today. And I think uh, we need to go into executive session and talk, talk through the numbers more. Um, this was more, more for them to just give you the vision behind the property. So.
Is, is Tyler here by chance? State's Attorney's Office?
Sure, he's in the conference room.
I just want to talk to him about, I know we have some executive sessions scheduled today.
Mr. Tandy, did you want to say something?
If I could, just to, I certainly understand that perspective. That, that is a valid way of looking at this. But I would ask the commission to consider the long-term overall economic benefit of this to Pennington County and the community. Um, the companies that we could attract here, the students that we can keep here after they graduate from Mines, keep them in the community. I think the overall impact is greater than whatever the difference might be between what we would pay for the building and what it might get on the open market. So I just ask you to consider that.
Mr. Johnson, you have?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, uh, Commissioner Ross Connect. Uh, so that value, I think what we came up with is we simply, Shannon gave you a presentation about the expertise at the assessor's office. Uh, what we did is we just went to the assessor's uh, website and saw the market value of the property at that number. So that's the number we used. We were spacing it off your assessor's uh, market value assessment. So that's where we started.
Commissioner Drews, you have something to say?
Yeah, I, I agree with Commissioner Ross Connect on it. We need to receive the value out of that building and and the investment uh, certainly that the county has into it. And that's why I was pushing for it to be on the open market. So you have uh, at least competitive in nature, uh, whether it's private or public entities that are interested in it. Um, but at least you uh, generate, I think, what you would be your best dollar amount in value for that building.
Just to be on, on the record, we haven't talked about a dollar amount, have we?
No, Mr. Chairman, uh, we just simply, on the letter of interest.
That's why we're in negotiation here, Tyler. Question I have is, is, um, you know, Davis is requesting an executive session for, you know, a conversation about contractual obligations. How do we handle that?
Sure. Tyler Sobzak, State's Attorney's Office. So 125-2 subsection four certainly does authorize you to go into executive session for to prepare for contract negotiations or negotiating with employees or employee representatives.
That's one of the reasons you brought them here today. So I guess we can make that motion then, or?
Mr. Chair.
Commissioner Dur.
I'm going to make a motion to go into executive session under that statute for negotiations.
I have a motion to go into executive session from Commissioner Dur for contractual obligations.
Mr. Chairman.
Seconded by Commissioner Hancock.
I would, I would think that we would set an executive session for that at a later point in time, take care of business that we have before the commission today and take this up in executive session.
I think one of the reasons we did it was because we had both these gentlemen here at this time so we can talk more logistically. So I would, you know, I, so.
And Mr. Chair.
We'll have a motion and a second.
Yeah, and I'm hoping it doesn't take very long, just that we can get some direction on where we're going, obviously.
Because we haven't talked about anything other than the idea. So.
Can I make a recommendation for a, just, just a better cited motion? I would make the recommendation to move into executive session, 125-2 subsection four. Just because that term cite has been discussed and I would rather be cautious and make a better, more clear motion than have it bite you later. So.
Commissioner Dur.
I'll second that.
Good to go.
Good.
Under section four.
One, we want to add the codified law. So all in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign? Motion carries, moving to executive session. So I'm entertaining a motion.
Make a motion to come out of executive session.
Second.
I have a first from uh, motion from Dur and a second from Drews. Come on, executive session. All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Hearing none, we are out of executive session. Move on to the next item. Uh, I'll bring my computer up. And that is uh, item 11, items from IT, approved signing of MOU secures SD. Mike, are you here? Was he just here? Okay. We're on item 11 and we're looking for Mike. There he is. Hey, Mike. Okay, we're going to give you the floor, sir.
Good morning, Commissioners. Mike Iverson, County IT Director. Uh, what you have before you is a memorandum of understanding with Secure SD. Um, for those of you who's unaware, Secure SD is an initiative funded by Senate Bill 187, I believe, that works with the um, Attorney General's Office, CISA, and DSU. Uh, what we're looking for is, a couple of years ago, we had DSU come in and do some cybersecurity infrastructure testing. We're looking to have them to repeat that. And so this just kind of protects the county data. Make sure that everything's clearly lined up for everybody. So with that, do you have any questions?
I have any questions from the commission? Do we need a motion for this? Recommend motion, approved signing of the MOU. So.
So moved.
A motion from Hackack and a second from Drews to sign the MOU. All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Hearing none, motion carries. Items from Human Resources, number 12. New position request from Sheriff's Office, request for approval of uh, recruitment, social. And Brian, are you coming forward too? I'm sure there'll be some explanation here. So, Sandy, you have the floor?
Sandy Sortland, Senior HR Manager for Pennington County. Uh, we are in support of this position for the Sheriff's Office. Specifically because it will help the current HR manager for the Sheriff's Office. This is going to be funded completely by grants and it will be sunsetted when the grant funding runs out. There is no intention for this position to continue once those grant funds are expired. And I will turn the rest over to Sheriff.
Ask Sandy a question?
Yeah, Commissioner Hancock.
So what is this position different than what you guys have been doing in the past?
This position will help in the Sheriff's Office specifically. Sage does not currently help with the Sheriff's Office recruiting. That is handled by their department. So that would help with them specifically.
And how about the media? Does Cody do their media or does the Sheriff's Office do their own media? That's why?
The Sheriff's Office does do their own media. Currently, Helene Duhamel has been handling that. And this would be in assistance with that as well.
Okay, thank you. Thank you.
Good morning, Brian Mueller, Pennington County Sheriff. And this was just an opportunity that we were looking for to help offset. We have a, a, our HR generalist is going to be out for eight months on military leave. And there's a tremendous amount of workload there, processing new applicants and helping out. We've got a couple of other uh, illnesses in our office. We're trying to backfill a few of the duties for temporarily. Uh, this will sunset. I will have, I will not be back in front of you to ask to extend this. This is part-time, non-benefited. It would be, if you approve it, it would be advertised as such. The person that would come on would know that when the work uh, was gone, that this position will go away. Uh, when our person returns back, we could work with county HR on any other possible uses for this. It's a two-year grant. It actually will be a little bit less than two years. We wouldn't get the position advertised and hired until we're anticipating January if you approve it today. Uh, but once the work goes away from the, the uh, things that we have currently going on, this position will sunset. And I will not be back in front of you to ask for any more funding. There's no match funding. It's 100% grant funded.
Chair.
Commissioner Hancock.
So I had a conversation and you already heard me talk about the grants and the evidence base and what's going on. And I had a conversation, Brian, because I always have to ask. And I appreciate um, that, number one, I like the part-time, non-benefited. I like that because I think we ought to do that more in Pennington County uh, for people in general, so not just this position. And it also tells me that they might not be here in a year or two. Um, and it's also because it's helping out with the eight-month um, leave from a military uh, young lady that we expect back later. Um, so in budget-wise, if you think about it, part-time, non-benefited, like I said, if I could do that more in Pennington County, I think the taxpayer dollars would be saved a lot better um, with some of those areas that we just need help with just for a while instead of making full-time positions. So I'm in agreement with this.
Thank you. I have a speaker request from the public from James. Is this 12, right?
Yep.
You want to come forward, just to state your name for the record and then?
I want to highlight exactly what this request is. It's a new position request. The county already funds a public spokesperson. Now we need a public social media person? You would think that a public spokesperson would be able to handle all types of media. So we're going to subcontract out or hire two people to do the same job. It makes zero sense. The other thing is, the county's already in trouble for violating civil rights on social media. Once you establish a government page and allow public comments, you cannot retract or admit public comments ever again. It's established case law, it's First Amendment protected. And the county, through multiple parts of the agencies, uh, especially the state's attorney's office, has been deleting people's public comment, which is unlawful. I, I just want to reiterate this because saying I want a social media person doesn't tell you they're going to follow the law or be trained in civil rights law. This isn't just a matter of a teenager posting on social media. They have to have knowledge of the Constitution because you'll be quickly in violation once they start deleting or editing comments. And it's got to stop. And again, I would just oppose this because we already pay for a public spokesperson. On what type of grounds do we need a spokesperson for every office, for every type of media? We already have the state's attorney's spokesperson. We have the sheriff's spokesperson. We have a media for the state's attorneys. Now you want media for the sheriff's office. The sheriff's office's responsibility is to protect and serve the public. Social media is a distant last. And I agree, press releases are important, but that should be a job for the spokesperson, not a separate new position. And I'll just end it on that. I would urge you to vote against this.
Thank you, sir.
Mr. Chair.
Yes, Commissioner.
So Brian?
Yes, sir.
In the presentation and Sandy, there's nothing in here about what the position pays in how many hours?
The pay would be $24 an hour for the part-time, non-benefited position. It's actually in the first paragraph of my memo.
And how many hours?
As a part-time, non-benefited employee, they have to work less than 29 hours in a week.
All right. So I'm going to go back to the budget discussion that we had. And during the budget discussion, I brought up that HR and those functions. that HR and those functions, uh, that I believe anyway, that were operating in silos and that, uh, you know, since January, when I came on, I talked about this. And I believe that the HR functions of the county should fall under the county's one HR director, and that HR director works for the county commissioners, but supports the entire county. And so when we got down to the final budget discussion, I talked about you having a delta in your office by somebody leaving, and that I felt it was a good time to move the HR function of your office under the HR director for the county. And then have a bigger staff to support the entire organization, not that each department would have their own, uh, you know, PR person, their own PIO, their own, uh, you know, HR team, their own HR managers, their social media, their recruiter. And I think there was a discussion with the HR director that actually, you know, probably what would benefit your office the most would be a full-time recruiting position similar to what the PD does. So I believe the PD has somebody under, you know, the police department that's a recruiter, but the HR is handled under, you know, the city's HR office. And so, you know, um, this is, you know, what I brought up during the budget process, uh, you know, wasn't supported. And, uh, I'm not going to support the position because I believe in our HR office, we have a, you know, kind of Sage does kind of recruiting, correct?
Yes.
So we have a position that does recruiting and social media. We have a full-time media, you know, uh, individual and, uh, in the HR office that is to promote our social media, media, that type of thing. And, uh, you know, work on some of that, I think, in tandem on that recruiting. And I believe currently, because I just had a discussion with you a couple of weeks ago about another matter, and you were handling in your office, I believe you were doing it, or, no, I believe it was Sage. So you guys were in Las Vegas on a, uh, conference down there on NeoGov, I believe. And Sage was doing the paperwork for the Sheriff's Office, and I believe doing new hire paperwork into the system for the Sheriff's Office because you were short-staffed. So it's that cooperation that I would like to see centralized, because again, going back to it, to, you know, we have a public information officer in the HR office, one in the State's Attorney's Office, one in your office. We have HR scattered, uh, you know, between your department and, uh, the HR working for the county. And I'm going to go back to the point that I made on the other grant, that I believe that the county is overstaffed, and I believe that we could save tax dollars by centralizing operations and not operating in silos. Those are my comments.
If I could just reply to a couple of things.
Brian, yeah, go ahead.
And, uh, I completely understand what you're saying. You and I've had a lot of conversations about that, and I talked at budget time that I'm, I'm also in support of that concept, and I've had conversations with Carol on working on streamlining some of these processes when we get back. This position really is going to help us continue processing our new applicants, which is our biggest need right now, which is a majority of what our employee that's gone on military leave is, does for us, and, uh, which is really helping us chip away at the close to $2 million in overtime that the Sheriff's Office has been spending the last few years, which is my goal. And each month, our, uh, turnover continues to go down, and our retention continues to go up, and I just don't want to have a gap, uh, to where we're eight months behind in that process. And I also think that that workload, uh, we are working very closely together with Sandy and Sage at this time. Uh, we have a great partnership. We're going to continue to build on that, move in the same direction that Commissioner Dur talked about.
And Mr. Chairman, I've got one follow-up.
Yes.
So when you're going back to, you know, talking about, we have hired people in-house to do social media, you know, marketing, recruiting, managing, and production, and I believe that, uh, you know, part of in the HR office is the production aspect of it about, you know, shooting videos and doing some of those things. And my only comment related to that is we've hired people professionally in-house to do these jobs, yet we're still outsourcing many of these resources. And if you look at the invoices each month, you'll see that we're paying basically for duplicate services that we have in-house, and then we're outsourcing it as well, so.
Commissioner Hackcock, you had a comment?
So you're, you're talking about a part-time, non-benefited, and you're talking about law enforcement that needs help with recruitment, and I'm going to guess at 29 hours a week or less that, um, at that point, is it going to be a lot of social media? Once you already have someone in social media, that's going to be a help area. That's not going to be, um, the specific area. When I talked to Brian was recruiter. So for me, if that was working so great before, and I've been in here for a while, um, through HR, not that they're doing a bad job, but that's, uh, they have 814 employees. It's not like 50. So trying to make sure that that is well taken care of and giving somebody the chance in the recruitment area to make sure we're recruiting and we're doing and being able to make them sustainable with that recruitment and being even specified in that recruitment to retain law enforcement. Um, I'm sorry, for non-part-time benefited, and that's going to benefit us. Um, you could say social media and you can use that part, but I'm going to say recruitment. Um, based on what I've seen in how many years I've been here, 11. I'm pretty sure Brian, that's where, I keep calling you Brian, Sheriff, um, Mueller.
I answer to a lot of things. That doesn't offend me. Thank you.
And I've been watching it. So I want that recruitment. I want that part-time benefited to be specified in there, and, uh, it's, it's paid for. So anything that that person can do to help Pennington County and the safety area move forward, I'll keep telling you, I don't think they're going to be in social media, like you just said. Um, a lot of that area is covered. We have a person that's in there, um, that does that. Um, and do I believe we need specified in all areas in Pennington County? No. When it comes to HR even, I'm also contemplating in that area, do we need one person? Because I'm finding that we're trying to keep up where we're at in HR with, with just the half that, uh, doesn't have the Sheriff's Office. So combining stuff is always a great idea, and it sounds like a great idea, but you also might be overwhelming people at 800 and some 41 employees than you are with 400 and being specified to be able to take care of those people. So, um, it's easier said and easier, it sounds like a great idea for saving taxpayer dollars, but when you see it and you've lived it, um, as Sheriff Mueller, um, makes a huge difference. So for me, um, my bottom line is the recruiter part. Social media, I believe, is well taken care of, and, and they are correct. And it is a grant, and it's part-time, non-benefited, which tells me it's going to be a huge benefit to Pennington County. Thank you.
Mr. Chair.
Commissioner Drews.
I'd make a motion to approve the temporary hire of the HR recruiter, social media specialist in the Sheriff's Office.
Second.
Of a motion to approve and a motion from Drews and a second by Hackcock to approve.
Mr. Chair.
Yes.
I'd like to speak out. So I, I agree. This is a, a great way to fill the need, uh, of the employee that you lost to a deployment. And I think that, you know, I understood what you were saying, Sheriff, and if you're working towards that end goal of what Commissioner Dur is talking about, that's great. Uh, I don't know if you can get there, quite frankly, because your office is so different, uh, from the rest of county government. But my best to you in trying to work toward that goal. Thank you.
Thank you. Who else have anything to say? I.
Uh, the only, I'm just reading this memorandum and, you know, the part that, uh, makes this more acceptable to me is the, this position will be funded entirely via grant funds awarded by the Community Police and Development Micro Grant. So, you know, I don't, uh, to me, all the pieces are falling in the right place.
I get that too, but I, and I just want to make a comment, Sheriff Mueller, that, uh, who makes the direction to outsource any media stuff? I mean, we have the ability to do it here. I mean, is that something we can, I mean, that Commissioner Dur brought up that we can actually, you know, if we can do it here, let's do it here and save the money and, and, uh, and I understand where you're going with this. It's going to be a temporary fill for the, you know, what you're experiencing now. If we, the gap is what I, I have the same concern about the gap.
Correct.
Um, but we do need to start moving forward with, uh, like I mentioned earlier, when we started this conversation about the, the budget and about how we look at, um, you know, making it, uh, you know, thinner. Uh, we, we are looking at ways to, um, you know, decrease our budget. Uh, I'm not sure that this one actually does that, but it, um, increase or decrease either way, but I do think that what we're trying to do is, um, sometimes people move at the speed of government and sometimes people move at a faster speed. I'm a faster speed kind of guy, and I think Commissioner Dur is a faster speed kind of guy. So we're looking for, uh, more results. And I guess so that's some of the, the kickback that you're going to get, that any other department head is going to get, is that, you know, we have an ultimate goal, and our ultimate goal is to shrink the size of our county. Uh, I don't think this accomplishes that, but I, I am concerned about the gap, understanding the situation that Sheriff's Department's in right now. I've had conversations with the police department, with the chief over there. They do have a recruiter, and it's been successful for them, and we don't, I don't want to stymie the, the ball, the snowball rolling down the hill that you have going right now, but I also want to be cautious on going forward that we are looking at ways. But, you know, you've always been there to say you're on the team, so, and I appreciate that. And so I think moving forward, we'll be able to do that, and we, we will try to figure out a way to interact policy between elected officials that can come up with the best thing. So, um, that being said, we have a motion on the floor, so.
Do you want to include the, um, the hourly rate and the effective date for your motion, please?
I don't.
No?
It's in the memo, so.
Well, they need it though for payroll purposes.
Okay.
Do they need it? I mean, it's just simple inclusion.
It's in the motion. It's actually in the memorandum that I submitted.
I'm good. More transparent we get, the better I am. So let's do it.
You have that motion?
Yeah, I do, but.
It's the hourly rate and the, okay, thank you.
Sure, add it to my motion then.
Someday, we're going to go to AI, so we got to get better at how we communicate, guys.
We like Kara. We're good.
Well, we're going to replace her with AI. I've already, we've already had that conversation. She's happy about that, so. Sit up here and listen to us. But anyway, so motion on the floor and all in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
So just one no, so four ayes, one no. And, uh, thank you. We'll move on to the next item. Motion carries.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Sheriff.
Item number 13, public hearing of ordinance number 741. Okay. This is one where all the attorneys come into play here. There's one in here that, okay. I think what's another? Oh, no, he's done with both of these. 17, no, 17, I want to keep that one. These can go. All right. So we're on to item number 13. Um, extension of ordinance number 741, temporary zoning ordinance, regulating utility scale, alternative energy and all. And we got Brittany up front. So Brittany, I'm going to give you the floor to start this conversation and, uh, we have one, two, three, about six speaker request forms, and what I'll try to do is alternate them between people who have checked yes and people who have checked no. So, um, we'll let you lead. Go ahead.
Okay. Good morning, Commissioners. Brittany Hand, Planning Director. So this item is a request for the extension of the temporary zoning ordinance, um, for the moratorium on, on alternative energy systems. Uh, just to give a back history of it, um, on November 19th, 2024, the board approved an extension, or, sorry, approved a temporary zoning ordinance, uh, moratorium on these, uh, alternative energy systems. Uh, there was a task force or a committee that was formed uh, that looked at the section 317 that dealt with the alternative energy. And during that time, um, there was quite a bit of comment and changes to our ordinance. Uh, that ordinance was presented to the Planning Commission, uh, in October, October 13th. The Planning Commission at that meeting particularly took, uh, public comment, so they didn't take any action. Um, they, um, probably will have at least two more meetings, if not three, um, to go over it. They were just taking public comment on the first one. Uh, this moratorium will expire in December, on December 12th, because it's on the effective date or the date of publication. So it will be December 12th of 2025 that this moratorium will expire. So the reason the staff is bringing this forward is the extension. There is a one-time extension, um, that can happen. Um, you can do it up for a year. Um, so that's what staff is recommending. Um, the reason for that recommendation for the year, we can always shorten the moratorium if needed, depending upon when the, um, board approves the new changes to the zoning ordinance. Um, so that's why staff is recommending that because you can only extend it once, um, and you can extend it for up to a year. So that's what we're recommending. Um, because we do not know when the Planning Commission and the board are going to make the decision to approve that ordinance, and also, once that's approved, there is a 30-day period, um, an appeal period, so taking that into consideration. So not knowing when those dates are, um, that's why we're recommending the year.
All right. So we have some, uh, public input, and a couple of these, I don't know if they're in support or opposed, so I'm going to call on them first. Richard Williams, are you here, Richard? Okay.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. If I might, uh, if we could take this a little bit out of order, I'm here today with Dale Harris from one of the companies that's interested in the solar project, and if he could go ahead of me, it might provide some more flavor before I get to my portion of this.
Okay.
Thank you.
And it's Dale, right? Just state your.
My name is Dale Harris. Uh, thank you, Commissioners, for taking the time to hear me out. I would like to kindly request, uh, delaying the vote on this more extension of the moratorium until after the planning and zoning public hearing is held on October 27th, to follow through on the timeline that was conveyed to the committee. On the 27th, we are going to be reviewing the substance of these ordinances, and there was a lot of work done by the committee, and we would like to hear more of the public comment and hopefully have a, a recommendation in place from the Planning and Zoning Board before this vote is, is held to extend the moratorium. Uh, we believe that this is a, is a very reasonable ask and, uh, would like for you guys to please, uh, consider extending or postponing the delay, or postponing the, uh, vote on this extension of the moratorium.
Thank you, Dale.
Thank you.
We're going to go on to somebody who, uh, supports the, uh, the, uh, moratorium, and I'll probably take two of those because there's, they outweigh the other ones. I'm trying to balance it out. So Mike Mueller, are you here? I seen you earlier, so. But if you wanted to state your name and, and then you have the floor, Mike.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, County Commissioners. Um, my name is Mike Mueller. I rise in support of this, uh, ordinance number 741 at a minimum action, but wholly support a moratorium into infinity. This one year extension is a limit under the STCL 11 dash 2 dash 10, and would end up awaiting more action once again at that time with a quick escalation of the use of AI and the puzzling desire for more data centers. One should be skeptical of the related energy and water resources that these data centers require. With a fixed amount of land available for agricultural production and private use, I have major concerns that the globalists are orchestrating dependencies of these energy projects that will keep shrinking the inventory of productive land, which relates to food and population control. As your primary duty is to protect the citizens of Pennington County, please consider a permanent moratorium for this issue. Thank you.
Thank you, Mike. And I am going to, uh, go to Eileen Peterson, and then I'm going to go to Richard Williams. So, Eileen, are you here? Hello. Will you come forward if you just want to state your name, and then you will have the floor, Eileen?
Eileen Peterson, uh, Pennington County resident and a member of the task force that was established. Um, thank you for this opportunity to speak. Uh, you are going to hear, no doubt, from others that the ordinance is good enough, and if more conditions need to be met by developers, it can be done through conditions added to a CPU. But I and many others believe that there are significant issues left to be fixed here, and it needs to be, and the moratorium needs to be extended. Um, I was a member of that task force, and I accept full measure of responsibility for allowing that draft to come forward in the condition it did, with so many issues still unacceptable from my point of view. I think there are two sides of this issue. Sure that drew us agree what is meant by the purpose statement of section 317. It says it's to set minimum standards for alternative energy systems and to minimize impacts on neighboring properties while protecting the health, safety, and general welfare of the public. The question seems to be, what does minimum standards mean? Is it the minimum the developments have to do, or the minimum that the county, the landowners, and concerned citizens are willing to accept? landowners, and concerned citizens are willing to accept and live with? There's some, what I feel is some of the major issues is inadequate setbacks for both solar and wind turbines. There's a total lack of consideration of impacts from infrasound on humans, livestock, and wildlife. There's inadequate protection measures for wildlife, both on the ground and in the air. There's no measure to limit fragmentation of agricultural lands, which is mentioned frequently in the county's, uh, comprehensive plan, concerns about fragmenting agricultural land, and this is definitely going to fragment agricultural land. There's a lack of any way to limit the acreage that can be included in a single permit or the number of conditional use permits that could be issued in any given year. And there's still an issue for the county, what are we going to do with all the waste produced here? I know one previous developer mentioned that the county landfill would be glad to take it. I don't think the county landfill can keep up with Rapid City, let alone the rest of the county and the waste from these developments. So again, why do we need so much more energy? If we're just doing this for the data centers, why are we doing that? How does that help South Dakota? Its economic benefit of growth seems to be going only to participating landowners and a few major players.
Eileen, I'm going to interrupt you. Your time's up.
Sorry.
Do you have a final comment and then?
Uh, I just want to say we feel like this is a David and Goliath situation. The people in support of this moratorium have no financial support behind them, and we've been struggling for sixteen months.
Thank you. Uh, Richard, you're up. Richard Williams.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, members of the commission. As noted, my name is Richard Williams and I'm with Gunderson Palmer Law Firm. We are working with Infinity Global with respect to their solar project. And if you haven't heard, they've got a proposal for a solar project that they're working on out by New Underwood. And as part of that, of course, what you do is you go out and you 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 talk to landowners and specifically for the land that you are needing. You enter into agreements with those specific landowners. And part of that's what I'm going to talk about a little bit today, why, part of the reason why we're asking for an extension. But let me lead with this. Here's our ask. Our ask is that you defer or continue the vote on this extension of this moratorium until November four. I believe that fits within your guidelines and we heard from staff that we might be able to push it back further. But we're asking for a small ask in this, at this point, to extend that, um, vote or continue that vote on that until November four. And there's, there's two parts to that. The first part is, we just heard that the, there was a two-part hearing that's been held or going to be held in front of Planning and Zoning. They had one on, on October fourteenth, and the next one's going to be October twenty-seventh. On October twenty-seventh, we're not sure. We hope that something comes out of that, uh, at a proposal for this board to hear. So I would like to think that we respect that process in, before moving forward with an extension on the moratorium, when we have an opportunity to put the moratorium back for a minute. Respect the process of Planning and Zoning, the task force, they have a proposal that's going to be voted on on the twenty-seventh. And the other part, and I mentioned this previously, we have these landowners that are involved. John Peck is one of those landowners, and he wasn't able to be with us today because he's in Australia for a family wedding. John Peck is one of the landowners that is working with Infinity. And Mr. Peck would like to use his land as he should. And he's got a letter in there, so I'm not going to get into everything that he would like to address. And, and I'd like to think that South Dakota respects landowners' rights, the ability of a landowner to do what they would like with their land. And I'm asking to push it back. Mr. Peck will be able to be here on November four. And I know he has a letter in there, but we both know that a letter is no substitute for you hearing from Mr. Peck himself, his hopes and dreams and what he wants to do with his own land. So that's the second part of why I want to do it. I think we respect the P and Z process and we respect Mr. Peck's land rights. And I want, I'd like you to hear from him personally. The other thing is too, is what we've been hearing, and maybe not everybody's hearing the same thing, is that there is a lot more issue with turbines and wind. And maybe when this comes to this commission, there is a thought that could be, hey, look, let's go forward with solar and maybe extend the moratorium with wind. Maybe that's the part that needs more thought. But we might not know that until we see what Planning and Zoning is doing with this and sorry, and we can hear from Mr. Peck. So again, I would close with a small ask. Let's just push this vote back to, uh, on extending the moratorium till November fourth. There's time to make sure that that's extended at that time if we need.
Thank you, Mr. Williams. And then I'll move on to Betty. I better put my glasses on, Betty. Kaneski?
Yes.
Hello. You want to come forward, Betty? Just state it.
Commissioners, almost afternoon. I'm Betty Kaneski. I'm from Farmingdale and I'm here on behalf of my grandson, too. He's going to be adjacent landowner to the proposed Eurotech project. And we have a lot of concerns about the ordinance. The setbacks will not be enough to protect the surface of groundwater from harmful chemicals or metals that might migrate from the site within panels or damaged by hail or high winds. Both are real possibilities. Fifty-foot is not enough setback to protect neighboring landlords from the noise and fire danger. The vibrations from the turbines and the infrasound. Safe water is a critical for any cattle and horse operation, which my grandson and I do together. If the stock dams become contaminated with the water, we are in big trouble. Ranching is a challenge enough without dealing with additional threats to our water and pasture And my last concern is there does not appear to be any interest in limiting how many of these projects or how much agriculture land is going to be lost to them. We cannot cover up all our agriculture land with this. And I've harped on this before. Our REA rates are going up the first of the year because they have to put too much money into supporting these solar and wind turbines and not put money into a reliable source of energy. And my sister, Eileen, has been on the task force and I sat in on a couple of them and it is, most of my needed land is in Custer County, but Seth, all his needed land is in Pennington County. And he can't be here today because they're gathering cattle, the ship tomorrow. So thank you for your time and I urge you to.
Thank you.
I'm like the other guy. A moratorium for ever would be fine with the ranching community and we have a lot of support. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you for your time. I'm going to go to Lindsey Mater and then I'll go to John Henderson. I'm trying to even it out the best I can, so. Lindsey, how are you?
Good morning, Commissioners, Lindsey Mater. I feel like I'm kind of beat a dead horse today because I've been speaking on this for over a year, but, uh, the biggest concerns that I have is our grasslands, which is the biggest, um, endangered ecosystem in our nation. And as Vanna pointed out at the Planning Commission last week, uh, once we start losing that, we lose our food supply, we become dependent on other countries. Don't think that's something we want to go through. So also, with being on the task force and researching everything, it is highly unlikely that you will find a wind or solar company that, um, is solely funded with US dollars. I think all of them, most of them, but I think all of them are funded from out-of-country sources as well. And that also poses a national security threat on us, so. As Eileen and Betty pointed out, the setbacks and quite a few things on the ordinance were not addressed, that, um, people from the public have brought up last meeting. Scott Edoff brought up that we didn't, uh, say anything about hunting issues, setbacks for hunting around these things. There was some talk about mineral rights. I don't think those are stated in there. I do think that we need to take some time and do this right for the good of the community and all the citizens of Pennington County and not rush through this. So I do, um, support an extension of the moratorium. And my dad cannot make it today. He's been heavily opposed to wind and solar throughout the last year. His stance is the same, so we both support the extension.
We did get a letter from your dad. I think it's public record, so it's been put into the, into the, um, public records.
Okay.
He sent an email. Okay. And same with Mr. Peck. His letter was put into the public records, so. Is that all you had?
Yep.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And we're going to go to, uh, John Henderson. And I don't know, John, whether you're for or against the extension of the moratorium, was you didn't check it here, so we're going to penalize you.
Take away my time?
Yeah.
Commissioners, my name is John.
Give you more time.
What?
We'll give you more time.
Good morning, Commissioners. My name is John Henderson. I represent Cross Saviors L L L P, which is a family-owned partnership. I think there's been enough. I was at the Planning and Zoning. Planning and zoning and things that they don't have all the answers. I don't think you guys have all the answers. I don't have all the answers. So I'll just make it very short and say, I think it's highly appropriate to extend this moratorium. There is so much stuff to be realized and found. Commissioner Johnson on planning and zoning, he's like, okay, well, what about diesel generators? What are we going to do with that? I think you need to woe this thing back because, I mean, extend the moratorium because there is a lot of things left to be yet uncovered and discovered and researched and all that. So I would support that you extend the moratorium. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Henderson. We will go to Scott Edoff. Scott? And that's all the speaker request forms I have on that item.
Give the best for last.
That's exactly what we did with the guy with the biggest black cowboy hat in the room.
I doubt that, but anyway, I'd, I'd thank you for your time. I, I'm, uh, in favor of extending this moratorium. One thing was, is there was a couple of things came out last week. That's a planning and zoning that nobody had heard of. That is true. So I know that the, all the questions are not asked yet. And, and another, another reason is out of these power grids, at least in New Underwood, none of that power goes to Pennington County. You know, the, the taxpayers are not getting any benefit out of it. And we're not getting any tax out of it either. The school district is not receiving any tax, extra tax off from that. They pay tax to the state and then it comes back if the state wants to pay them, but, but they're really not receiving any tax money to, to any extent off from that project. And one, one thing that comes into my mind, uh, about five years ago, I was the, I was the president of South Dakota Stockbrokers. And we got into a huge deal in Harding County where the oil companies just up and left Harding County. And they left a half a dozen wells open. And the Harding County had to put up some money and the state had to put up some money to come in and seal those wells and clean up a lot of that crap. And I, I don't want to see that happen here. You know, that's why I think this needs to be extended and, and there needs to be more questions answered and people need a little more time to think about it. Thank you.
Mr. Chair. Thank you.
I would take a question.
Commissioner Drews?
So just, just a point of clarification. I don't know what the school district receives from it, but I know that they do receive property tax, uh, offset. The county does receive through the renewable energy. I think from the current one that's out there at New Underwood, uh, that was an operation, I think about eight months that first year.
Yes.
And they had projected that the county would receive about two hundred thousand a year. And I checked with our county auditor and we did receive a hundred and nineteen thousand for that shortened year. So I suspect that the approximately two hundred thousand that they had suggested we would be receiving is more, more closely to that number than what we actually received for that shortened year. So just a point of clarification.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Commissioner Drews. I was going to ask that question, so, um, we have more questions from the commission.
Mr. Chair, Brittany, would you, can I have Brittany come up?
Yep. Brittany, are you here?
Yep.
So Brittany, that moratorium slide, if you keep going, does it show, uh, page four, State Statute eleven dash two dash ten? So I guess my question is, what's reasonable? First, first sentence, within a reasonable time. So isn't a year reasonable?
For the extension?
No, I'm talking about the moratorium. We're coming up on one year.
Correct. So the committee met for most of that time to put together the zoning ordinance amendment that they brought forward in front of the Planning Commission. The Planning Commission, um, during that meeting, had taken public comment. And I know, um, the chair had made a comment that he was not in any hurry to make decisions about the ordinance, that he wanted to take the time and make sure that he got all of the public testimony, got all of the information before they made any decisions to bring it on to the Board of Commissioners. So that's what staff is, why staff is here. We don't think that before this year expires, that something will be in place and effective by that date, by the date.
So what's going to happen, remind me, October the twenty-seventh, there's a meeting?
There's another Planning Commission meeting. They are probably going to take more public testimony. There are planning commissioners in the audience and they can confirm, but this was my interpretation of their comments during that meeting. Staff does not feel that there will be a resolve at that meeting. There'll probably at least be two, if not three, more Planning Commission meetings in order to gather enough information, make recommendations for amendments, have staff get those amendments, bring them back forward to the Planning Commission for them to approve to move forward to the Board of Commissioners.
So with that being said, would it be unreasonable for us today to continue this until the recommended date, eleven, four, twenty-five? So, uh, we can see what happens at that meeting on the twenty-seventh?
You could, either way. But I'm just giving you the information that we had at the time.
We're not approving anything. We're not denying anything. All we're doing is just waiting to get more information before we make a decision.
Staff was not aware that the recommendation was going to be to continue it to November fourth at the time that this was brought forward. We brought it forward based on the timeline because we wanted to make sure that the board had enough time and information to make the decision to extend this moratorium.
Mr. Chair.
Commissioner, you have the floor.
So I think what has changed in this ordinance, and again, as the ordinance goes through a process, but prior to, you know, putting the moratorium in, the conditional use permit in an agricultural district for renewable energy, you know, wind and solar only went to the Planning Commission and did not, that conditional use permit did not go to the commission. And so if the Planning Commission, they meet every two weeks.
Twice a month.
Twice a month. Good. So even by the fourth of November, they're not going to get through this. So they're going to have another meeting on the twenty-seventh. They're not going to get through their process. Once they get through their process and they, you know, they send it to, we're not going to receive it until they get through it and then send it to us. And we're not going to get through it by the time this moratorium that we currently have is going to expire. And so I have a couple of comments related to this and everything is tied to, you know, the ordinance change. And it's a question for Tyler and you while you're up here. Both of you. So we've heard comments and, you know, I've, comments have filtered back to the committee while we've met and, you know, we've had some of these discussions about this, but we're talking about the ability to have a moratorium and say that initially the commission last year did it and said that we're doing a moratorium for a year. And based under this STCL, we're looking at extending that moratorium. Brittany has said we can only, you know, take action once and we could extend it for a year. Okay? And then what is the ability or can we do a permanent moratorium and say that we're not doing any of these in Pennington County?
Tyler Sobczak, State's Attorney's Office. Well, you know, Commissioner, that is just something that I've not yet had the opportunity to, you know, in, in, in one sense, we've been doing research on the, you know, restrictiveness, what's the best for the doing research on the, you know, restrictiveness, what's the best for the county, how to best proceed in association with the concerns of your constituents and also all of your thoughts on the matter. As to a permanent moratorium, I'm gonna reserve right to look at that a little bit further. Uh, I don't wanna make any, particularly with all these people in the business, I don't wanna hamstring my opinion to something I've not particularly been able to dive into, particularly the term moratorium. Now, if we're talking about, you know, you know, I suppose increased regulations, um, I I I just don't wanna make a gunshot recommendation to you folks that we can or can't do anything without doing some more legwork on Brittany and I's in. But I would like to take a moment just to talk about that eleven two ten, if I may. So Commissioner Roskinek had some questions about reasonableness. And this is just my interpretation of that term reasonableness. You know, when we have a large scale, you know, mega important topics such as, you know, utility scale, wind and solar, I think the, you know, the term reasonableness in conjunction with those processes, you know, give you folks the ability to, you know, well, I guess the way I'll put it is, it's more reasonable to have a longer moratorium depending on the more important topic that we're talking about. And I think utility scale falls squarely in that pocket. So I think the extension for another year is proper. Now, I also wanna touch very briefly on, you know, the ask of Infinity Global and Mr. Williams, where, you know, let me put it this way. I think, you know, the extension of the moratorium is crucial at some point, whether it be today or the fourth, but it shouldn't be continued past next meeting. I think Jordan and I talked a little bit about publication yesterday and that if it is moved out to the fourth, it should be okay, about ten days, eleven days. So if it's the fourth and moratorium expires on the eighteenth, which I just checked, you know, the one that was passed in two thousand twenty-four, although it was published on December tenth or eleventh, um, we in the document have it expiring on the eighteenth. So I still think it's best practice for us to assume that that's the that is the expiration date. If you are gonna continue it only once, it's my opinion is reasonable, given the importance and the importance of the topic and the importance to nail down a good ordinance for the benefit of the county.
If you don't mind if I chime in, if you read the last sentence, in no case such a measure be in effect more than two years. So I think they're kind of defining reasonable for you. Um, but the the situation I have is that we've been working on it for a year. Do we have, does the planning commission have a plan of attack on how they're gonna approach all the questions that have come up or arisen so far? Um, and are they the final decision making piece?
So at the last meeting, all they did was take public testimony and they were gonna take that back and consider it. Um, I anticipate there will be more public testimony and more information brought forward from the public at the next meeting on the twenty seventh. I know that there were comments made by the planning commission, particularly the chair, that he wanted to take in all of that information and consider it um and take his time in making recommendations or any changes to the ordinance. Typically, when that happens, they make those recommendations for the changes. Staff goes back, makes those changes, works with S A O, presents that back to the planning commission for more discussion, for more public discussion. So I don't see um a resolve in one or two meetings. I see it probably in three.
Okay. Who, if the planning commission decides this specific ordinance and they model it and do all this stuff to it, that's a final decision?
No. So that's a recommend recommendation to this body. So now, once they recommend what their changes are.
Well, they're obviously struggling with it, so.
They are taking in public comment. There was a great deal of public comment at the planning commission meeting for them to take in and to consider for changes to the ordinance.
But I think I think Commissioner Roskinek brings something to the table about talking about reasonableness, because you're talking about property rights of people that live in the area. You're talking about pre property rights of people that own the land. You're talking about people making business decisions. You're talking about all the stress that the people have if this comes into their environment. At some point, you you gotta call it and say, hey, um, if the commit if the commission, and I'd made a comment earlier about committees and stuff, and there's no offense to the committees, sometimes I think committees are made to s to shirk the responsibility of the end party. And I hope that's not what we're doing here. Uh, you know, that being said, if there's room, if we still have one more meeting before we can plan this uh uh moratorium extension, I don't know what would be the all fire her, do it today, if we could extend it out on the last day and have more information that if the planning commission wants to punt on this at some point and give it to the commission, because we got about a year left, really to be to meet the the state law. That's why I made the comment earlier about committees and those things are, you, those people are non-elected officials. They're making a big decision here about how this can affect the people in New Underwood and and how it can affect the people that are making business decisions. And uh, we're elected to do that. So really, the urgency and the angst is on us. Uh, so I'm gonna.
Mr. Chair.
Commissioner.
I guess what I'd like to do is I'd like to uh, if we hold, continue this until the fourth of November, at least Mr. Peck, John Peck could speak. I mean, he is a other part of this equation, the property owner of the thirteen hundred acres. And obviously, he's not here today because he's down under. So.
Chair.
Yes. Commissioner Hattcock.
Thank you. Um, so for me, it's health, safety, general welfare of the public, continuing a moratorium to do the due diligence of the planning commission is a no-brainer. You can always, if an ordinance um needs to go through, um, that moratorium comes off. It still gives John Peck or anybody else um lots of time to go through the process with that moratorium. Moratorium doesn't say it's gonna stay on a year. It just gives due process. So um, it's not gonna hurt to put a moratorium. Like you said, it's not gonna hurt to do it to November fourth. It also is not gonna hurt to do the moratorium. Um, for me, it's reasonable. It's mega important to the public um for this to be processed. Um, there's a lot of people in this room that are against, and they want that process to be a due process and a longer process. And I'm in agreement with that. So I'm not gonna continue it for one guy to speak without being mean, because he will have lots of time to speak, because there'll be lots of meetings at the planning. And I always look at those or I go to those, as you guys seen. And we also have our due process up front of us. So for me, just know one thing, for uh distributed, I am for distributed utility scale. Um, from what I've seen and when I've looked up, I did my due diligence. I'm gonna be up straight. It's uh, it's not beneficial for health, welfare and safety to the public. From what I've seen, I have an open mind, but I've done a lot of um um looking at and went to the committee at least once. Um, for me, it's gonna be about the public and how that affects property rights on both sides. But I also know enough that if your property is affecting somebody else, it's not beneficial. So you have to put that into perspective when you make a decision. And for me, I did look up an indefinite moratorium.
Commissioner Hattcock, I'm not, I don't wanna, I wanna chime in, but we're talking about whether we extend this or not.
Telling them why.
And it can be extended on the fourth or not.
And I'm telling them why, sir. So I appreciate that.
I mean, if you wanna talk about.
Okay.
Voting on whether you agree with it or not, that's a whole nother road.
I did. And that's why I'm talking about. Uh, thank you. And why health, safety and welfare, general public, for me, when we're voting and moving this forward and that it's mega important, I'm telling why it's mega important to move it forward. So for me, in a definite moratorium, there was a question asked, so um of our state's attorney, I did look it up, and other states have um taken those out because of it. So unless there's um something that's gonna change for me, um, I think we should extend the moratorium. I also think we should be looking at all aspects of what utility size or utility scale um projects do for our community. That's my bottom line, why I make my decisions. Um, that's where I'm at today.
Commissioner Drews, you have the floor.
Mr. Chair, thank you. So I don't agree with the extension of a year uh to the moratorium. I think it can be done. I think we're at a point where uh the planning commission is uh, as been stated, maybe two or three meetings away from making a recommendation on this. Uh, then it would come to the commission. So I would think a much shorter time period could be established for that, uh, such as like ninety days. I also would think that uh, you know, most, most of the comments I've had in regard to this uh are opposed to the wind turbines, uh, not necessarily so much uh on the solar. So I'm wondering if this if this can't be divided uh so that we have an ordinance on wind turbines and one on solar, uh, separate from one another. And I would favor uh moving back this uh intent of extension to the November fourth meeting. Thank you.
Mr. Chair.
Commissioner.
So extending the moratorium now, I think, uh, you know, and again, extending it for a year doesn't mean it's a year. It just gives us that because if you go ninety days or a hundred and twenty days and we don't get through the process, we've shot ourselves in the foot. And so, and I've got a couple other comments to it. But again, the issue is if we wait until November fourth, I do believe it puts us up to the publication, you know, deadline. And we're not gonna have a decision by November fourth that's gonna tell us what to do any different than what we have today, because it's not gonna get through the process. So I'm gonna make a motion to extend the ordinance number seven forty-one, the temporary zoning ordinance regulating utility scale, alternative energy in all Pennington County zoning districts, effective upon completed publication on November sixth, two thousand twenty-five.
Thank you.
Okay, we got a motion to approve the extension for, is there a period of time here? Because.
It's for a year in the in the uh.
It's one year.
One year.
So we'll have a discussion on that motion. And uh, I'm having a hard time with this because it's simple fact that you can argue it either way. I mean, but when they made the original motion for a year, it's still it's still not ended yet. And we're sending a message to the planning commission that we're gonna extend it for another year, uh, which is, it is within our boundaries to do it for another year. So that would be two years total. But uh, at some point, someone's gotta draw a line here. And we got all the people that are, you know, have an interest in the property rights of both sides, all sides, everybody included. And uh, I don't see an issue from waiting till the time this one expires. If, is there a problem with the, if we wait till November fourth to better, I don't really have a good grip on, you know, I'm, we're not voting on whether we're gonna kill the opportunity to do solar or wind. That's not what we're voting on. We're voting on whether we extend a moratorium that doesn't expire until November something. Why did we get this today, I guess, is the question?
We're getting it today because um after the meeting um with the planning commission and with the committee members, it was clear that we weren't gonna meet the deadlines to get an ordinance in effect in time before the expiration of this. Um, there are notice requirements that are in the newspaper, so we wanted to get it in front of the Board of Commissioners in time to make sure that you didn't have one meeting to make a decision as well. I don't like to put things in front of you.
You're telling us we don't have to make a decision today. We have more than one meeting.
And staff was not aware of the request from Mr. Peck to extend it to November fourth. So when we had staff do the um notice requirements, I always have staff do it ahead of time. So we always have a buffer just in case we have had issues in the past with um the newspapers not putting things in. There's just different things that happen. So we always try to err on the side of caution. That's why it's in front of you today.
Chair.
Commissioner Hattcock, you have the floor.
So what happens if we um extend it? Let's say something happens. Um, we don't get that extension. We don't make a motion. It goes past December twelfth. Then what happens?
It'll revert back to the original ordinance.
And I'm cautioning you right now, actually, because the actual initial or temporary ordinance adopted says effective until, I think it's the eighteenth that says, I'm I am advising you that that's the date that you should be looking at for the expiration.
And that's why I'm saying, and you don't know for sure, the bottom line, how long it's gonna take. Um, they've had the um.
I'm not sure.
Called. Let me finish.
Yeah, I just wanna know what you're saying though, because I gotta understand it.
Okay. If you don't understand, it's gonna be pretty clear. Um, on the uh, the uh ordinance that we did on vacation home rentals, how long did it take to pass that through? Um, it took a while because the planning commission, it went back, it went, it came to the commission, it went back to planning, they had it three meetings, came back to us. All we're asking is, it doesn't have to stay on a year. There's gonna be a decision made. The main thing is that you have that extension long enough that that ordinance stays in effect until it's finished. That's all we're asking. We're not asking, okay, for sure, one year. And why would you do November fourth and bring all these people back to argue their point on something that we know clearly is gonna take longer than the process? Um, there's a lot of people in here that um are ag and should be doing cattle and other things, and they're taking their time out as well, let alone lawyers and other people. So for me, um, it's common sense that you would, you would just say, leave it on there. And then this board can say, okay, um, by February fourteenth, we're done. Uh, that ex that moratorium is done, and now we have to make a decision. Let's take that off. We can do it the same day that we bring it forward, and everybody's on the same page. And you don't have people coming back guessing and guessing and guessing what's gonna happen on this commission. So their time is valuable as well.
Mr. Chair.
Commissioner.
So getting back to this committee, and so the committee, which I had mentioned before, and I talked to the planning uh commission last week to kind of give him a back history as to how we got to this ordinance. So the previous board appointed the, you know, the idea of having this committee. We made committee appointments, I believe, in January or February, March, I don't know. Anyway, the committee began to meet in April, and so we met every two weeks from April, sometimes more than, you know, uh, twice a month. And we spent every meeting going through this thing with a fine tooth comb, listening to input. And I'm going to say that there were others from the public, landlords that wanted and supported this, Mr. Peck included, that were in favor of this. And so as we went through this process, uh, April until about a month ago, not even quite a month ago, saying, okay, here is something that Brittany can put forward. It doesn't mean it's a finished product. And we understood that. But what we did talk about in the committee uh was that we were gonna have to have an extension of this moratorium. And that was talked about about half the way through in the summer, because we knew we were not gonna get through this. And so everybody knew, you know, that this thing was not gonna go through planning and go through the commission before uh there was anything that would, you know, look like it could be adopted finally by the Board of County Commissioners. So extension of the moratorium through the committee has been talked about for months. And it doesn't mean that it's going to be a year, going back to the point Commissioner Hattcock made. This means it gives us a buffer to do our due diligence so that both sides can have public input, both from the planning commission side, and then let the planning commission absorb that to and make recommendations. And then it comes to the commission. The issue is, if we do nothing, and this thing by publication, missing deadline, whatever, is gonna revert back to the original ordinance, meaning a conditional use permit for wind and solar can be done solely by the planning commission without the Board of Commissioners having any input on this. And so that's why, you know, nothing new is gonna happen on the uh fourth of November to change the fact that we need to take action. And I believe that action is today for a year.
Mr. Chair. I'm gonna go ahead and make a substitute motion. My substitute motion be to continue until November the fourth, two thousand twenty-five, so that we can hear from Mr. Peck.
We have a substitute motion on the floor. Okay, now we'll talk about the substitute motion. So.
All the questions.
Yeah, I think everything's been talked about. I'm ready to vote on the substitute motion.
So Tyler, what what consists of calling the question? Is that, do we need a?
Take the vote.
Yeah, take the vote.
All right. So all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign? No.
Opposed.
Okay, hold on a sec. Let's, let's.
I I said wrong.
Okay.
I was thinking something else.
So let's, all right. Everybody understands, if we pass this motion, this goes to November fourth. Okay? If we don't pass the motion, it goes back to the regular motion.
I know.
Okay. So if you vote no, you're voting against the motion. If you vote aye, you're voting for the motion. Okay? Has everybody got that?
Got it.
Let's do a roll call vote.
Chair. Chair.
No.
Drews?
Aye.
Hattcock?
No.
Roskinek?
Aye.
And Wythenbach?
No. Now we're back to the uh motion of for one year. And I wanna make a comment on this because I don't like getting backed into a corner about this whole year thing. If we, if we go ninety days or something like that, something in between, that's a compromise, can then we add another ninety day more?
can then we add another 90-day moratorium if we feel necessary for them to get the work done?
No.
We can't. Okay. So how can we do it now? How come we're doing it now?
Um-
Do it now if we're doing it for, we get two shots added or something, or what's the deal?
We have, you have the initial temporary zoning ordinance, the moratorium, and you get essentially another, up to another year on top of that. And so it was, you know, it's one of those things where, you know, will we need a whole year? I, I'm not even going to opine on that, I suppose, but I'd rather have it and not need it than need it and not have it.
What I'm, what I'm leery of is obviously, like I talked about before, is timelines. I mean, there are, you know, timelines are timelines. I mean, we could keep, now that they have another year, are we going to wait another year to make that decision? I mean, because then now it's got to go through the planning commission. If they got something that's palatable, then they should present it to the commission and, and so we can move on with life. So everybody, the people that are stressed out about it being built by them, the people that want to build it, so we can come to a conclusion. Otherwise, we're-
Right. But Chair, why I'm saying that year is because what's going to happen is it's going to go through the process of the planning, it's going to come back here, there might be more changes from here, it has to go back to the planning. It's not just because it could take 90 days. I'm going to tell you through that process, this isn't going to be a simple process. So, and there's nothing wrong with, once that process is done, before this commission gets it, that we drop the moratorium in we have before. So it just makes the due process far enough out that if it keeps going back and forth like a lot of these ordinance that are contentious, that it does its due process. So for me, if it's going through the process and it's ready to move forward through us, and we are ready to make those motions, we take the moratorium off, and it's as simple as that. It doesn't, it doesn't extend.
Mr. Chair.
Yep.
I'd offer a substitute motion to take the date provided to us by the state's attorney's office of November 18th as that the-
The effective date of the extension?
Right. And move that to February 18th, 2026.
Tyler, you were evidently thinking-
Yeah, I'm thinking about that. So the motion was to take the November 18th date and make, that's very similar to what we have already, correct? That's about-
90 days.
90 days, I'm sorry, I apologize, missed that, so.
November 12th.
If I could ask as well, according to the statute, it says that it may be renewed for one year, not up to one year. Does that matter legally?
Given the fact that I've seen other moratoriums be less than one year, I'm going to take that as a term of statutory construction and just say that the legislator missed a, missed a word, so.
Chair.
So, Mr. Chair. Yeah, I'm just going to state that, you know, we could go back and forth in these dates. It is at 60 days, 30 days, 90 days, 45, 49, 51, 52 sold. The issue is, you, we don't have another shot at this. So if you put a year on, it does not mean that we're going a year. It means that if we get through this process, then it's 60 days, it's 90 days, whatever, that's arbitrary. And the comment I'm going to make, and I guess it's a question for Brittany, when this goes through the planning commission and they throw it to the board, and we make changes to it, do we have to send it back to planning?
No. Typically, what happens is you make the changes, and what has been, what staff has been advised by the state's attorney's offices, once you make your changes and you make your recommendations, that that ordinance in, in its entirety with all of the changes is published one more time with no changes, so the public knows exactly what that ordinance is going to say. So all of those timelines and publications take a lot of time because of the publication dates. So once the planning commission recommends to this board, you take all of the testimony, make your recommended changes, it goes back to staff, and then it's like a clean copy, so everybody knows what the changes are, what the ordinance is going to be, it's published one more time, and then it's voted on.
All right. So this is not, because again, you're going to get what you want, you're going to get the final, you know, chomp at this, it's not going to be bouncing back and forth. And the other comment related to how long planning commission is going to set on this. So currently, right now, I believe Commissioner Ross Connect, you're the one on the planning committee?
Correct.
Okay. And we have two of the board member, two members on the planning committee, Matt and John wore on the committee that we had to kind of put this together, so it's not, it's not new to them, they're quite aware of it. And I do not believe the planning commission is going to want to sit with an audience every meeting and sit on this. I believe it might be the reverse. At some point in time, they just might sooner than later tap out and say, I think this goes to the commission because they don't want to deal with this for six months. So I don't see, you know, a timeline, but I do not want to be handicapped, and we're not taking away anybody's voice and having input, we're just giving us a buffer, and instead of, you know, setting an arbitrary date for us. So anyway, that's my comment.
If I, may I inter, oh, sorry.
Commissioner Hancock got a question.
I also just want to go real quick back to the statute that Jordan and I were just talking about. You'll, you'll note that the emergency, the emergency measure is limited to one year. So given that, pull that in the back part of the sentence, it does imply that you can go to a lesser time, so I just wanted to clear that.
Here's my, here's my concern, Tyler, is that it's not the lesser time I'm worried about, it's, it's trying to extend it some more and not being able to-
Understood.
And then we're done. So if you're guessing, which we're doing right now, that this, all this process is going to move forward in a timely manner, been here long enough, contentious issues never move past timely manners. Again, to make due process and do your due diligence as a commissioner or otherwise, if you're ready to vote on something that just went through a planning commission right away, it doesn't take you one meeting as well. There's going to be a lot of public comment, you're going to go back and forth, and again, my biggest issue is, once you make that, if I'm correct, Tyler, once you say February 14th, we can extend it past that, we're done. We have to make that decision, and I don't think that's doing the due diligence by the public or the people on either side. So some might be more ready than other because they're just gung ho, but the other side, I think you need, and that's why there's a process, and that's why they put this in here for a reason.
Commissioner Durr, you got a comment?
No.
Oh, I mean, Commissioner Drews, I'm sorry.
Thank you. So, once adopted, this proposed ordinance is no different than any other ordinance. It can still be amended.
Correct. So once it's adopted by this board, there's a 30-day appeal period, and then it's effective, and then at any time, the Board of Commissioners can direct staff to make changes to the ordinance.
Correct. So there isn't any reason to think that we won't have proposed amendments later on to whatever is adopted anyway, whether it's adopted in 90 days or a year down the road. My concern is, is if we set it at a year, it'll be a year. And so, and I think that with the activity that's going on right now with the planning commission, and with their recommendation comes to our board, I would think that we should easily be able to come up with a conclusion on that within that period of time. So that's why I'm pushing for the substitute motion.
So Chair, I have a substitute to a substitute.
Okay, who was the second to Gary's substitute? Nobody?
I'm going to go ahead and second Gary's.
So we have a motion.
Sorry, you were the second.
Motion from Durr substitute and-
Drews.
There they go. Drews, I'm sorry, I apologize.
Now we're doing another one?
Seconded by Ross Connect.
Because we never had original motion, did we?
You did.
Yes, we do.
Yeah, we do. The original motion is one year.
Okay, I apologize, I didn't know if anybody-
Mr. Chair.
Made that motion.
Yes.
As Jerry mentioned earlier, if, you know, this ordinance got approved, then it's, you got to go through the conditional use permit for the potential use. And that conditional use permit, aren't there conditions tied to that that's supposed to safeguard the community and the neighbors?
No.
So, Mr. Chair.
Hold on one second. Commissioner Ross Connect has a question.
Well, I've seen some of these conditional use-
Brittany, can you answer that?
Yes, conditional use permits, the planning commission can impose conditions on them. The biggest change in this ordinance is that the committee on both sides felt it was important that items of these, this size and this importance in the community, just like mining, that these types of conditional use permits go in front of the Board of Commissioners for a decision, for a final decision.
And, Mr. Chair.
Commissioner Durr.
Okay, so what I'm hearing is, if, if we had an ordinance that's not quite ready, and it's not ready for prime time, but we put ourselves in a position by the 15th of February, or whatever that date is, well, we have to have something or we have nothing. So we pass something that's not ready for prime time because we're set to this deadline, that ordinance goes through the publication, it's passed, the very first thing you're going to get is an application in your office based on that ordinance, and we can't go back. Sure, you can, you know, put conditions on it, but they're going to be making an application based on the criteria in the ordinance, what we require. That's what happened with Yarotek. So Yarotek was able to come in with a process that we weren't ready for, and so we, the previous board had to deal with that because that's what the ordinance was, and there was no process to get to the county commission, it stopped with the planning commission. And so, again, if we set a deadline that doesn't meet us, and we say, okay, we only have until mid-February, and we've got to get this passed, so we're not ready, but we got to get something out there. As soon as that's effective, applications are going to drop based on that criteria, and then you're going to be held to getting down to the conditional use requirements that are in that ordinance, correct?
Correct.
All right. I think I can help bring resolution to this. I've been thinking about this a lot, and one of the, one of the issues comes in when we ask for non-elected people to, to make decisions for elected officials, that's how this all started. One of the things, sometimes haste makes waste. When you make a decision based in a short period of time to make something happen, when you can actually vet it a little bit longer, give it a more of an opportunity, and maybe vet that process a little bit longer. And after having all the discussion today and seeing the people, and I am going to suggest we go back to the, to the original motion of a year, and we can vote through these. And my rationale is, is we need to work with the county planning committee to help them resolve the issues that they're having, as long as we're not putting off these, just to wear everybody out. Because there's some things that, you know, you do a moratorium, or you, or you just make it too difficult for somebody to do something, and I don't want that to happen. So, and I, I do want to bring resolution to this, and, but I also want to make the comment that when you vet something, sometimes, when you vet it and you go through the process and you take the time to do it right, I'm good with that, as long as we're consistent with it. So I am going to err, or whatever, potentially err on the side of the people that have come here to, to support the moratorium. I will go back, so if we need to vote this other amendment down and go back to the original, I guess I'm the deciding vote, so we'll make that change.
Mr. Chair.
Yep.
Brittany, relative to the ordinance, you're saying that that's really not ready to be adopted, so what part of the ordinance needs to be worked on, or what parts?
So during the planning commission meeting, there is a considerable amount of testimony made for changes on the ordinance. So the planning commission is taking that testimony and making changes or going to recommend changes, because that's typically the process, so.
I would just say that if they can come up with a solution that is presentable, if this commission, like I think that has been met here, wants to vet this even further, I think, and we're going to make the final decision, I think at some point, we should do that. And, and we can get the input from everybody, as we've done in the past, to make that decision, not, you know.
Let's vote on the substitute.
So, let's vote on, we have a motion on the floor for a substitute motion for 90-day, or whatever was it? What was it, till February? So all in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
Okay. So motion fails, 3-2. So now we're going to go back to the original motion was, is this correct now, Tyler, from your understanding, are we at the original motion? Where it's to extend this for one year?
Correct.
Okay. And then after that extension, there's no more extensions?
Correct.
And we're going to do our due diligence to move this thing on and work with the people involved, the citizens, and we're going to work with the, with the investors that want to do, you know, use their property rights also, and come up with a conclusion to get it to the commission, so the elected officials who they have voted for can make this decision, so.
No call.
Let's do-
Mr. Chair.
Yes.
One comment. I'm going to support the motion, but I, I want to make sure that just because we're establishing it at a year, that we don't just kick the can down the road and make it a year. I want this to come to resolve as soon as we possibly can. We do have other property owners that are not opposed to this, that are in favor of it, and they, they deserve to have an answer from it also.
That was my hangup on the whole deal, so I think that I made that pretty clear, that I'm going to be involved from where I wasn't. So I'm not a slow-moving guy. So all in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Opposed, same sign? Unanimous decision, motion carries. We'll move on to the next item.
I have a follow-up with Brittany and Tyler. So over the last few months, I've, you know, asked you questions about what the county could and couldn't do related to this, and so I'm just, and I don't have to talk about them all here, but I want to get some of those before we get through this process. And then the other question, because it's been asked to me, is can the county do a complete ban on solar and wind? Is that within our authority? And can we do that? So I would like you to research that as well. And Brittany, I would like to see a change to our comprehensive plan, and so I'll be talking to you about what that timeline looks to have a change to our comprehensive plan wherein a conditional use permit is authorized in an ag district, so.
Thank you. And also, if you would, look at indefinite moratorium and what that means as well. I think that's kind of what Jerry's going, because it's not, for me, it's not distributed, it's more the utility scale that I'd like to know some answers on, so thank you. All righty, we're going to go to planning, if I'm right, next. Let's go ahead and take a 10-minute break, if that's okay, to have planning set up.
Okay, here, we're ready to roll. Thanks for, thanks for your patience, everybody. I'm, I'm going to entertain a motion to move into the Board of Adjustments.
So move.
Second.
So we have a motion by Durr, seconded by Drews, and move into the Board of Adjustments. All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Hearing none, motion carries, we're in the Board of Adjustments, and Brittany, you have the floor.
So item A is subdivision regulation variance, COSB 25-0005 for Schreiner Investments LLC, Shrein, Schreiner, and Mary and Lester Schreiner. The applicants, and it's to waive road improvements to Reno Gulch Road. This was continued from the previous Board of Commissioners meeting, so the applicant and the applicant's agent could be present. The request is, they are in the plating process, let me get this up.
We did hear this last time, right?
Yes. They are in the plating process and in the rezone process, and as part of the rezone, because they're rezoning to commercial, that the road improvements are required, and they're act, they're asking to waive those road improvement requirements for the, this plating process, and it would only impact this portion, access to this portion, this 1.3 acres, that nine acres actually has access off of Highway 38516.
Mr. Chair.
Yes, Commissioner Ross Connect.
So I believe the underlying intention is to take the ownership of the property as it currently is and put it into a family trust. That's why they're going through all this plating and rezoning.
That is correct, and there was a portion of the property, this lot right here, that was cut out or platted out of this larger portion at one time, and left these being non-contiguous. So what they're doing is they're just trying to make it, they just are trying to clean it up, essentially.
Sure.
I guess, can you explain to us on what the variance is necessary for?
Because they're requesting to zone it to commercial, and the lots along that on Reno Reno Gulch Road, are commercial, and it's the commercial road standards. Currently, right now, it's a 24-foot wide paved road, but commercial standards require 32-foot.
So, they, how much?
32.
So, you wanted to expand Nemo Road?
It's not Nemo, it's Reno Gulch Road.
Nemo Gulch, so you wanted to expand the road?
In order for the zoning, as part of the subdivision requirements, that is why.
The piece that's in front of their property, or?
Correct, the road in front.
So, it'd go from 24 to 30-foot?
32 feet.
So.
So, they're requesting to waive that, because they're requesting that it's not necessary, because the only access off of Reno Gulch Road for commercial use would be that lot, AR, and it's 1.3 acres.
Off Nemo Road, the only access?
Reno Gulch Road.
Okay, the only access, but we're not talking about the access, we're talking about the road?
Correct.
So, you expand the road from 24 feet to 32 feet?
To access the 1.3-acre lot.
I guess, I'm, I'm.
Mr. Chair, the applicants here, they might be able to explain it better.
Okay, I got some speaker requests for them, so I'll let them talk, too. I'm just trying to give my, I wanna make sure everybody's under the same understanding, so we're not talking about something different. Because last time, we were talking about different.
So, Mr. Chair.
Yes.
Just a quick question. So, is the current road 24 feet?
Yes.
Okay.
Can you show us on that map?
That's the, that's the road as it sits right now. That's the approach of Reno Gulch Road onto 385, and then, there's the.
So, that's the piece that they would, they would expand to, to 32 feet?
This portion right here.
The greveled one.
It's, it's not, this is just the approach.
Yeah.
But it's this portion of the road right here.
Oh, so they're just expanding the approach? That would, you know.
No, it's the road, this road right here.
And how much of that would they, are you requesting them to do? Well, that's their driveway right there, right?
Yes.
You want them to expand their driveway, or you want them to expand?
It would be, because this is the parcel in question, this parcel is already zoned commercial, it's this parcel, it would be up to the approach here. So, it'd be this segment of road to access this parcel.
They have to do the road all the way from that access to the, to the highway?
Correct. From here to the highway.
Approach to the highway.
Okay. So, everybody have an understanding of that? Okay. So, we have a couple people, Tom, I think I met you earlier, Tom Thorson. Do you wanna come forward, Tom? I might know you, but nobody else does, so you just wanna tell who you are, and then you'll have, you have the floor, Tom.
Okay, so my name is Tom Thorson, I'm a resident of Reno Gulch Road. And my comment isn't directly about the variance on the access. I've been unable to attend meetings prior that, dealing with the question of the business itself, of an ATV rental concession that this access variances would facilitate. I'm not used to talking publicly, so I'll have to breathe a little bit. So, my understanding is that in the last meeting, it was suggested that because ATVs are legal, that there isn't really a, a reason to be, to decide against an ATV rental concession. So, I would just, I wanted to recollect to you that, I don't remember the year exactly, but some years back, there was a request for a helicopter concession in Rockerville, which was declined, refused because it would affect a residential area. And that's the, our question for the residents of Reno Gulch Road, that an ATV rental concession would highly degrade our, our quality of life. And so, that's my comment.
So, I'm not sure we've even talked about that today. It's irrelevant to this, Tom?
Well, it's, the only way that it's relevant is that the access would facilitate the moving forward of this concession.
So, there's already an access there?
There's not an access there, that's.
Not an access.
The question today is to, is regarding the variance, to allow an access into that property where the proposed business for an ATV rental concession is.
Brittany, can you answer that question?
So, these are the properties that are in question. This is the 1.3 acres that is not zoned commercial, that's part of the request and the trigger for the road improvements. This portion of the property, the nine acres, is already zoned commercial, that can already have an ATV rental as a use by right, irregardless of whether or not this road is improved or not.
So, Chair.
Commissioner Hattcock.
So, Tom, what we're here for today is if we're gonna take it from a 24 to a 32?
Yes.
And for me.
And I understand that. I've just been able to attend these moving meetings, I've rearranged my schedule several times, and, and then, you've rearranged the schedule, and I've had to miss, so I thought I would come and make my comment if you would accept it.
Thank you, Tom.
While I could.
And I appreciate the comment. So, it wasn't really about 24 or 32, it was just, you wanted to make sure you got your comment in.
Because it is, it is related in the bigger picture of what's going to, what is being proposed to happen at that location.
For me, if you've heard the lady, or the people talking about the trail that was gonna be turned into a road, and they didn't want it bigger, that's kinda like the argument here, you'd wanna keep it a 24 and not a 32, so you'd have more access, more area for them to drive on without sounding facetious, but that's what we're deciding today, if it should be a 24 or 32.
Yeah.
Would you prefer a 24 or a 32?
I would just prefer that access not be allowed for, for that entrance into a commercial zone.
That's fair.
Okay, I understand that, but that access is already there. We're not, well, we're not, we're not voting on whether they're an access or not, so I guess.
Yeah.
So, anyway, I just want you to make sure you understand that.
Yeah, well, I guess my, my understanding of the question is that a commercial access requires that 32 feet. And if, and if, and granting the possibility that they could still have a commercial entrance with a 24-foot would be, would be allowing for a commercial access against normal regulations. Am I wrong, am I wrong about that?
Zoning that property commercial triggers making that road 32 feet, which, I don't know if you'd be happy about a 32-foot wide road, because then you could actually drive a truck down it.
Right, no, I wouldn't be happy with that.
So, it's kind of a quagmire, so.
Yeah.
Alright.
Yeah.
So, we, we have John Henderson? John, I think I met you too, sir, earlier.
Me, yeah.
Yep, that's fine, John. I'm hoping you understand what we're talking about a little bit. I think we're kinda confused on what we're talking about.
I don't, I don't think I am. Okay, my name is John Henderson, I represent our family partnership, Cross Average, LLLP, and we own property adjacent to this property across Highway 16, 385. The only point I really, I really want to make is, is that if the county has these ordinances, why does everybody come down the road, get a variance? If the regulations are the, are the regulations, they are what they are. Now, Reno Gulch Road is narrow, I don't, the figure was just, what, 24 feet? I believe there's room there to do it, and they have the property to do it. So, if it, if they are required to have, for a commercial property, to widen the Reno Gulch Road 32 feet wide, then I don't understand why they would, it would require a variance, or a variance would be granted.
So, you don't understand why the, we would not make them do a 32-foot road?
Correct. Yeah, whatever, if that's, if that's the county specs on a county road for commercial access, then they have to, they have to provide that, to get into a, you know, commercial property. All the arguments, I, you know, we've only had like three or four of us here, we've been going to the planning and zoning meetings, we had a whole bunch of people, but frankly, they're just played out, they're tired. But the biggest, their biggest concern was all the ATV traffic, which is already awful on Reno Gulch Road. That's been their biggest complaint, and this is just only gonna encourage more traffic. And Reno Gulch Road is poorly maintained by the county.
You made it wider, would you have more traffic or less?
It isn't gonna matter, well, I don't know. I, I, I can't, I can't.
Speculator.
I can't guess that, no, I don't know.
No, I get it.
But it would be safer for all the traffic that's already existing there, rather than approach to a commercial property, that you only have a very narrow 24-foot wide, wide road. I did hear you say something about trucks. Well, Rod Schaefer, he's been in many of these meetings, he trucks, that's his living, and he's, he trucks up and down that road, but it's, I mean, it's narrow. But a wider, safer approach would make more sense to me.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, sir. Did you have any, any questions for him? Oh, okay. So, Kale, no, no, you have a speaker request for him?
Yeah, thank you, Commissioners.
You're talking about all three, A, B, and C?
This one, and then I'll, I put in a speaker request for the next items, too.
Okay.
If I could speak to this one, thank you, Commissioners, for your time. My name's Kale McNibow, Long Branch Civil Engineering. We prepared the plat in this matter, and Shane Schreiner is the applicant on it, Shane's in the, in the room as well, if you have any questions for him after this. So, what's kinda motivated us to where, how we got to where we're at? And I, and I think Brittany did a really good job of explaining that this whole thing was one parcel, got platted back in '25. In 1970, they carved out this triangular wedge, made that a lot. So, what it effectively did, just took this north half and this south half, if you will, and made them non-contiguous. So, they're, they're cut in half by a lot. That lot then creates an unplatted balance, a non-transferable unplatted balance. Mr. Schreiner's going through an estate process with his, with his folks who wanna put this into a living trust, and the idea is just to combine the lots so that, you know, we can move this property to the trust. You know, obviously, I think the, it's been vetted that the variance is, you know, to this frontage on Reno Gulch. I'd like to point out that the county built the road and the DOT built first half of this. I'd also like to point out that the, the primary use would certainly be in this corridor, and the access to this corridor comes off Highway 16, the DOT built that approach. So, really, I guess we were looking for some support to be able to move forward with not necessarily a commercial building permit, but an estate planning plat, and to do that, we're, we've arrived at where we're at. And had we not, or in the 70s, had they not carved off this, in the middle of it, we wouldn't be here. But in either event, this plat created a remnant that's just not transferable. So, it's, it's more of a paperwork effort at this point to make it transferable within the living trust. And if you have any, any questions, I'd be happy to answer them, otherwise, I'll, thank you for your time.
Any questions for?
Mr. Chair, at the last meeting, I believe Planning and zoning said that if they wanted, if they want to develop approach in the future, that they would have to go through all the hoops to meet those requirements, and at this point, they're just trying to transfer ownership.
Okay. Is that right, Brittany? Yep, okay. Any other questions, or? So, we, can we entertain a motion on 14A?
I make a motion to approve the variance.
Okay.
Second.
We have a motion from Rosskinex, second by Hattcock, to approve the variance. All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Hearing none, motion carries, and move on to 14 Beal. B, appeal of Planning Director's decision, Hills West, Mike Roth, denial of appeal to allow a rezone. This something, this is. How you doing today, Cody?
Not too bad. Cody Sacks, Senior Planner. So, yes, this is an appeal of the Planning Director's decision not to take in a rezone and a comprehensive plan amendment, or a lot-sized variance. The, or Long Branch, so Kale is in the audience, if there are any questions. On behalf of Mike Roth, met with staff about dividing a parcel up off of Twin Springs Road. I apologize, I did not get a map in, in your guys' packet. But it would be, sorry, there's two right next to each other. It would be this lot that's on the screen right here. What they're proposing to do is to divide it halfway through here, which would create two three-acre lots. The future, the current zoning is agriculture, and the future land use is agriculture. We just went through our future land use and our comprehensive plan that the board amended back, I believe, in July, and it was effective, it was effective in, end of July. We looked at the infrastructure of all the properties. And the infrastructure in the area just doesn't support a higher-density lot, so subdividing it, so staff couldn't support a rezone or a comprehensive plan amendment. And a lot-sized variance to allow two, three-acre lots to be zoned agriculture and allow all the agriculture uses just didn't fit. Also, that, what compounds the problem here, too, is that these are off of Forest Service roads, and the Forest Service with the government shutdown, we can't talk to them and see what they would require for access to those lots, if they would allow any additional development to it. So, staff is recommending denial of the appeal to rezone and a comprehensive plan amendment for the subject property of Birdload MS 964. Its current infrastructure does not support a rezone and comprehensive plan amendment, and there's no special condition exists for a variance.
Okay. Kale, we have a speaker request form from Kale on this item.
Yeah. Thank you. Again, it's Kale McNibow, Long Branch Civil Engineering, represent the applicant on this one, Mike Roth. I would like to point out that this is approximately a 10-acre mining claim. Splitting it in half makes those lots just short of five acres.
Kale, just a sec. Cody, can you bring up the, the comprehensive plan so we could see what's around it, instead of just seeing that one piece? I'd like to see what, they're zoned around that piece as well?
And, and I do apologize, Kale is correct, those are just under four. I was thinking rural residential, which requires three acres, so they are just under five-acre parcels.
Five acres for the rural?
Just, just under, so it'd be rural residential zoning, since they go under the five. So, this is the current zoning, and then, future land use would be this.
What are those light-green things?
So, the light green is agriculture district, the dark green is open space, which is mainly, there's some private property that's open space, but it's mainly Forest Service property is what's owned, open space.
Well, these are inside the Forest Service property.
Can I ask you one more question?
Yep.
So, on the Forest Service property, then shouldn't we see if they're gonna give access or not, because that's a huge yes, no for me, if I'm going to grant somebody something that they have to get access to through the Forest Service? And maybe you're gonna answer that, Mr. McNibow, but what do you say, Cody?
So, that was, sorry, Cody Sacks, Senior Planner. So, that was one of the concerns that staff had, was that we couldn't talk to the Forest Service to see what access they would provide. I know that there's already access to each one of those, to those lots, but whether they would grant an additional usage with that special, the special use permit or whatever the, I can't remember off the top of my head what it's actually called, I think it's called a special permit.
That's gonna be the bottom line, because if you can't do access, because a lot of times when I've seen them, and I went through this a little bit, a lot, they don't let a second person use that access. So, maybe you have that answer, Kale, before we make a, or for me to make a decision, I need to know that.
Yeah, yeah, thanks again, and it's an excellent question, and it bodes a little bit to kind of our concept of how to approach this. Right now, yeah, we've got a 10-acre miner, mining claim, that's, you know, obviously GA. It is surrounded by Forest Service that requires access easements into it. I guess we assume that if, if there was no potential, you know, we have an existing 10-acre, and it has legal access, our idea, then to split it into two lots, we would, we would go into it with the understanding that a staff report and any sort of plat application would have a provision that says it's not gonna get approved until you've gotten Forest Service access. But my thought was, it's hard to negotiate with the Forest Service for a lot that you may, you might say you can't have anyway. So, what I wanted to do was take this through the preliminary plat, so we could have preliminary plat that says, yeah, if you get this access easement through the Forest Service, as a provision of the staff report, you have to have it in hand, then we would support the subdivision of the property, versus going after the Forest Service for access, they're gonna say, well, you already have access. And we'll say, well, it, it makes a long, hard process through the Forest Service, and if we got the second access, but you didn't let us plot it anyway, then we just have two accesses for no reason. So, I think the owners fully understand that there's gonna be a stipulation on the staff report that says, you're not moving forward to final plat without that, another Forest Service access. But if we, if we can't move forward, and if there's no hope of plating it, then there's no point in talking to the Forest Service about it either.
Mr. Chair.
Commissioner Rosskin.
So, right now, if somebody wanted to, basically, it's just under 10 acres, 10-acre mineral survey, and you wanted to build a home on there, you could probably go ahead and get a building permit, because there is physical access to the property across Forest Service.
Yes.
But if you had two lots, and same entitlement they have with the Forest Service, and you want to get a building permit for two lots, I think that's where the hangup would be, wouldn't it?
Yeah, we'd, we'd need to go through and get a second access from the Forest Service to be able to access both ends of the.
But could you do that beforehand, so that, I guess that's where we're getting hung up at, is that we just don't see access to two pieces right now, unless that special use permit, you know, specifies it. That's, just wanna make sure.
I can help clarify that for you, Ron. He's saying that if he goes to the Forest Service without the permission to even divide it into two lots, the Forest Service is gonna say, you've already got access, why do you need access again? I see where he's coming from. So, I guess, Cody, if you could answer the question about the plating process? So I guess, Cody, if you could answer the question about the plodding process and then is that a access on both ends of the property? Is that what that is?
Uh, there's, uh, sorry, Cody Sacks, Senior Planner. I bel, yeah, so that dotted line down there is, is the Forest Service roads.
And then you've dotted line on the top.
Yeah, whether that top one, I believe that the top one leads to it because that's where the house is located. Um, I guess I could turn that.
Well, either, maybe what, what Kale is telling us, Cody, and maybe you can help us understand, is that if we approve them to split it, then he can actually go to the Forest Service and ask for access for both of them because he has to come back and still plat this. And if he can't get access from the Forest Service, the planning conditions not, or I mean, the planning department's not going to allow him to plat it anyway.
Yeah.
So he's just trying to get, he's trying to do, think ahead.
Yeah. So what, what, what Kale's kind of describing, um, we have, th- this would go through the preliminary plan. So right now, he submitted the layout plan for it and what he's talking about is on those conditions, like if a rezone's required, we'll put that prior to filing the plat at Register of Deeds, the applicant, um, obtained and approved rezone and comprehensive plan amendment for the subject property. So those conditions are put on there. So what Kale's saying is that, um, if he's allowed to go through it, um, with either a rezone and compli, comprehensive plan amendment or a lot-sized variance, that they've at least got their foot in the door to get going on the plodding process where they would just be kind of stuck here. Um, we're in a predicament because we don't want to rezone something, um, on the off-chance that the Forest Service would approve a, a second access. Um, so I guess what staff would look for would be, um, does the planning, or does the Board of Commissioners, um, would they want more of a, a lot-sized variance? Would they want the rezone and comprehensive plan amendment? Would they want neither, um, with it? And then that's how staff would condition that, that plat moving forward. So if the board wants a, a rezone and comprehensive plan amendment, that's how the condition would read. If it's a lot-sized variance, that's how the condition would, would read for the layout plan.
The commission can decide on, you know, I, cause I see what he's saying. I've dealt with the government long enough to know that they're just going to push it into eternity if there's not any conclusivity about can he do this before he goes to them or not. So you're asking us to make a decision, do we want, how do we want to move forward with it, basically?
Correct. Do you, does the board want a rezone and, and comprehensive plan amendment in front of them or do they want a lot-sized variance in front of them or, um, do neither or, n- neither? And then the plodding process would just stop at that point because if you can't get a rezone or a lot-sized variance.
Commissioner Hancock, you have the floor.
So you're in the middle of ag, so you're basically spot zoning a rural residential, rural residential right in the middle of a spot zoning with the plan that maybe that the Forest Service would give you access or not. So you're splitting the lots, not only you're creating that one set of spot zoning, you're creating two with nothing else around it to change and make me feel that, uh, in my case, that we should change the comprehensive plan to it. Um, I believe people should do what they want with their land, but I'm not going to guess later on, um, lot, if they're going to get the, the people to, or the Forest Service to agree, which is harder than heck and it takes a long time, um, to do that. But my main concern is you're right in the middle of ag, your spot zoning to rural. So do they own the whole land around there or why is it just that spot?
Forest Service.
Yeah, it's entirely Forest Service surrounding this mineral claim and the, so that's 10 acres zone general ag.
Okay.
Yeah.
So it's mineral, so it's mineral rights. Is anybody else, so that's my question again, so is there anywhere else in, on that land that you have mineral rights where somebody else can do the same thing and pretty soon then you have not spot zoning that we're not just going to put this area in the middle of ag because it's, um, mineral claim?
Yeah, yeah, I guess we were just looking to move forward with a, a straight split of it, not subdivided any further than that. I think similar to, if I can pull that up, similar to what happened right here. This is the next item, next lot we're going to talk about and they knocked this one, this 10-acre in half.
And they, they have, um, access to it through Forest Service as well?
Yeah, I believe they've got the same issue with Forest Service access.
And you're going to, you're going to start splitting all these lots in these areas for the comprehensive plan of ag so you can do these lots for, um, two different areas where Forest Service, so you've got some more coming. Is it the same road that's going to be accessing the other lot that's, uh, in the orange that you're going to ask for next?
Uh, no, it's a different, it's a different trail. I believe it was in the package submitted, showed the site plan and of trail access looked.
Okay. And then that, then it brings up the question, how many people are going to use a trail and not an improved road in order to get on a, on a Forest Service road? How do you fix that road in order for it to make health, welfare and safety of those people? Because we just had this issue with 40-unit rule on a road. How's that going to be safe with me deciding, me personally deciding that I'm going to split these lots with these Forest Service roads with, uh, you have a picture of your Forest Service roads that these people would be using?
Uh, yeah, I have a, I have an exhibit that shows where the Forest Service roads are relative to the easement that would have to be acquired. I think that was.
And can they improve these Forest Service roads if they are not up to par?
Yeah, I, I'd have to do some evaluation to determine.
I don't, I don't think they can. A lot of times, um, if the, if the Forest Service is going to use it for something else, Kale, you know, they would. So that's also my concern is your spot zoning. I like people to use their land, but I also, we ju, like we just said, we want it to be health, safety and welfare and if the roads aren't up to par and now not only we're going to put one person, we want to put two lots and then we want to do some more lots below it with the same issue. I don't think, in my case, um, I'm willing to do that only because most of the time, like I said, if there was a road that was big enough and improved and whatever, that's, that's, that's going to be a life safety, um, for people in the area that are doing that.
Mr. Chair.
Yes.
So Cody, did I understand you to say that there's already an improvement on this property?
Uh, yeah, so Cody Sacks, Senior Planner. There's a house, um, these lines, you know, they're not survey quality, um, but they do have a house to the north, um, where they would split it, there would be a vacant lot to the, to the south.
Reno.
Good.
So that's going to have three people accessing if they split the lot?
So, uh, no, it'd just be this one. So if they split the lot here, um, this would be one lot here and one lot here. I believe this other one that they're talking about would come from a different.
That lot down there is somebody else's, right?
They're all Forest Service roads?
Yep, this whole thing. So if you turn.
So any roads that are going to these houses are Forest Service roads?
Yep. So everything that you see in here are all Forest Service, Service roads. Um, and, and staff, staff wants to reiterate that it's, it's not necessarily a, uh, a, a no on the comp plan and the, and the rezone. It's just that current infrastructure doesn't support that. If they can get the infrastructure in there and work with the Forest Service on it, um, staff would be more supportive of, of that.
And that would be my argument as well, Kale, and you know, just from liking and knowing infrastructure in order for health, safety for those people. If the Forest Service says, okay, they can improve that road and then, uh, we can move forward, I would be in agreement with that. But I would like to know that first before personally I make that agreement because infrastructure to me is going to make a huge difference for, it might not be for you, um, that are living there, but maybe you might sell it to somebody else, too. So, um, you're not only looking out for you, you're looking out for the people that might end up with your property, so.
I, I have to chime in because that's what he's trying to do. He's trying to get improvement, he's trying to get this to the point where he can take it to the Forest Service and get an answer from them. Because if you go there and just say, I want access from, the, the Forest Service is going to go, you already have access, so.
Jason, can you, can you come up and explain, um, what we're trying to say with the infrastructure?
Sure. Jason Thonison, Assistant Planning Director. Yep. So, uh, it's kind of a cart before the horse situation. So whenever we do.
Like a dog chasing his tail.
Whenever we do a comprehensive plan amendment and a rezone, uh, we do look at infrastructure. And if there is no infrastructure there, we don't know if there's going to be legal access to the property. So we don't want to make a permanent change to our future land use and our zoning based on a maybe. So when he comes in and asks for a comprehensive plan amendment and a rezone, we want to see that infrastructure existing.
So what would keep us from having a trigger? Cause if he doesn't plat, if he, if he can't plat it, you're saying he still has two, he hasn't rezoned and he has it.
Yeah, but what we don't want to do is rezone this to, uh, Ranchhead already kind of residential zoning district. Uh, it would limit the property owner.
And you make a caveat on there that says, won't zone it unless he has the.
Right. And essentially what you're doing, if you rezone this to a residential zoning district, you're taking away some of the property rights that they have under agriculture. And what we don't want to do is limit anybody in that regard based on a maybe. Because if they can't get access from Forest Service, then there's no reason to move forward.
With, with the, the quagmire is you can't get access until you get an agreement, so.
No, I don't think that's true. I think you can work at the Forest Service and tell them what you're proposing and then you work through the Forest Service angle first and then come back for the comprehensive plan and a rezone.
Saying you should can still do that through the Forest Service.
I, I can pretty much guarantee where that's going to go, but, okay. Um, I guess the commission's got to decide.
I'm just saying that, uh, these scattered mineral surveys are going, they're all over the Black Hills, especially around Keystone and Hill City and you're, we're going to be, you know, with the housings, there's only so much private property in the Black Hills. It's either a homestead entry survey or a mineral survey. And sooner or later, spine demand, you're going to, this is going to come in front of us more often than not and we're just going to have to figure out a way to navigate it. I don't have a problem with splitting that lot.
Right. We just need the legal access established. That's all we need to move forward with the comprehensive plan amendment and the rezone. So once we have that, we can put this in front of the board.
But once we rezoned it, you're saying we're doing something we can't back out of?
Exactly.
Kale, do you agree with this scenario? I mean, do you?
I, I guess I, I do understand the position that's made, that, that, that we don't want to actively rezone it before we have, um, you know, the access issues worked out. I guess I as, I assume that, you know, that we wouldn't necessarily jump into a rezone, we'd jump into a, a plat action, right? And the plat action would then be a layout plat.
Can you guys discuss that so we understand it?
Yep. So we're already started, we've already started the plodding process with Long Branch. Uh, we've done the layout plan. So we've provided the comments that, hey, you need to get a rezone and a comprehensive plan amendment or a lot-sized variance. So that's already done. Uh, we can move to the prelim stage of this, um, and he can secure the Forest Service access during that preliminary plodding process. And if it comes to pass that he does get the access, then we can definitely move forward with comprehensive plan amendment and the rezone at that time. So we're not stopping you from submitting the preliminary plan at this point. To my knowledge.
Where's the hang-up here, Kale?
I think the hang-up's in that, the staff report that you're referencing that I have not seen.
So the Cody, uh, Cody Sacks, uh, Senior Planner, the, he's applied for the layout plan. Uh, it's still in review. It hasn't fully been written yet, um, but that would be a condition that would be added of what Jason was talking about.
Well, that's why he doesn't know what you were talking about.
Correct, yeah. So it ha, it hasn't been approved, but that's what would happen would be with the infrastructure improved, once you move on to the prelim and once the infrastructure's all there and whether a rezone, preferably a rezone and comprehensive plan amendment.
That make more sense to you now, Kale?
Yeah, I think, I think if I can see the.
You think we're in a, in a position that we can move forward or?
Well, yeah, I guess with, um, if I get the, you know, layout plan, staff report and it recommends, you know, some sort of conditions of approval, that gives us, that gives us some confidence that if we do get this, if we do get this access with Forest Service worked out, that this could eventually end up with a final plat that would be two lots.
Okay, we continue this?
Does Jason, does that make sense? Cause he obviously didn't see this final report somehow.
Do you want to continue it?
I'm not sure.
Yeah, I'm a little confused on the timeline as well. I was under the impression that he got the layout plan and that's already been done because this is, this makes this process very premature if he hasn't even gotten the layout plan.
Kale? What's your answer to that? Do you have the layout plan or not?
No. And if we need to.
Motion to continue?
We need to continue this until after the layout plan, staff reports.
Well, evidently it's done? But he don't have it or?
No.
So it was, it was just applied for like a week and a half ago.
Okay.
It should be done within the next few weeks or so. We have, staff has 30 days to get that back to them.
So Cody, if we continue this, how long do we have to continue it to? So he doesn't have to pay again either?
I think if, so this, this didn't cost anything.
Okay, thank you.
Um, there's no fees or anything associated with it. I would say probably if we did the second meeting of November, we should be good.
What would that be?
November 18th.
So move to continue till November 18th if that works, Kale?
Second.
Yeah, that'll work.
Okay. Hopefully that works with the staff and then we can have a conversation.
Does that solve C also?
Yes, it would.
That's what we're talking.
Yeah, it's the same, it's the same issue with C, so.
Okay, we'll do B first.
So can we, can we have that motion cover both B and C to, to continue? Would that work or not?
I would do separate motions since they're separate items. So what's the date?
November 18th.
That's the same date the moratorium expires.
December 12th. I don't know where you guys got November 18th.
Yeah, so.
It's all good.
So we have a motion on the floor? Who's made the motion?
I did.
Hancock made the motion and Dur seconded the motion. So all in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries. We'll move on to item, uh, C.
Move to continue till November 18th.
A motion to continue to November 18th by Hancock, seconded by Dur. All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Hearing none. Motion carries. Uh, move on to item D, Appeal of Planning Director's Decision. Okay, uh, Cody, you have the floor, sir.
Uh, so Cody Sacks, Senior Planner. So item 14D is, uh, Quentin Larson's Appeal of the Planning Director's Decision. On October 6th, staff met with, uh, Mr. Larson about vacating a section line right-of-way, um, off of Pine Grove Road. Uh, if you look on the screen, the proportion, the proposed section that they were looking at vacating is in red here. Um, the reason for it was they have concerns that the owner of this property wants to do a riding arena and wants to connect through to the section line and create additional traffic down here on Pine Grove Road. Um, Mr. Larson was advised that the planning department would not accept the application to vacate the section line right-of-way, uh, as it doesn't appear to be in public, the public's interest. Uh, it just seems like what they want it vacated so that their tr, uh, traffic doesn't go down that portion of the section line. Uh, however, um, we've talked about the 40-lot rule a lot. Pine Grove Road over here and Hart Ranch West Road over here are both dead-end road systems. Um, so in 2017, um, some, the person on this lot, um, built, I believe it was three or four structures within the section line right-of-way. So that section was vacated, um, but this section over here to Rodeo Road is still intact. So whenever this property gets subdivided, um, staff would require that right-of-way be dedicated on the southern lot over to here and a road would be built, um, which pretty much at that point, all the houses on that dead-end road system from that point up, um, would be removed from the dead-end road system because you have two ways.
I got, begs the question, how did, how did, how did somebody build in the right-of-way?
Uh, I believe they built without permits, um, so it was something that was caught.
And we vacated it after the fact?
It was, the section line was vacated after the structures were built, yes. Alright, so they're requesting to vacate this portion of the section line. But again, it doesn't appear to be in public's interest, so staff would recommend to deny the appeal.
Do we have a motion or a question?
I recommend motion to deny the appeal to allow the applicant to vacate the section.
A motion from Hatcock?
Second.
Second by Dur to deny. All in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Move on to item number fifteen.
Move to come out of Board of Adjustment?
Of a motion to come out of Board of Adjustments?
Second.
A second by, a motion from Hatcock and a second by Ross Connect to come out of Board of Adjustments. All in favor say aye?
Aye.
Motion carries. We are in planning consent agenda and that's Ms. Brittany. The consent agenda. Thank you. You have the floor, Brittany.
The consent agenda is acted upon by one motion and vote of the board. Items may be removed from the consent agenda and placed on the regular agenda at the request of a board member or a citizen. The planning and zoning consent agenda contains the following two items. Item A is Plan Unit Development Overlay Review, P U R twenty-two dash zero-three, for Nathan and Alexis Sobleski to review a plan unit development overlay for a specialty resort, and staff recommends approval and Planning Commission concurred. Item B is Plan Unit Development Overlay, P U R twenty-three zero-six, for Horse Creek LLC, is to review a recreational resort and staff recommended approval and Planning Commission concurred.
Mr. Chair. Commissioner Ross Connect, you have the floor?
I'm gonna go ahead and move to approve the consent agenda.
A motion from Mr. Ross, Commissioner Ross Connect?
Second.
A second by Commissioner Drews. All in favor say aye?
Aye.
Opposed, same sign, hearing none. Motion carries. Move on to item sixteen and we have Mr. Jason.
Afternoon, Commissioners. Jason Thunis, Assistant Planning Director. I give you one second to get my presentation up here. Item sixteen A is Rezone, C O R Z twenty-five dash zero-zero-one-one, to rezone from Agriculture District and Rural Residential District to Ranchette District. The applicant is, or applicants are Howard and Cynthia Dressler. The other affected landowner is U Lazy Two LLC, Mary Ann Schmitz. Location is one-three-four-seven-nine Schmitz Trail. Existing land uses residential and agriculture. Access is off Schmitz Trail and there's no special flood hazard area on the property. When staff does consider rezone and compare, or rezone requests, we do look at the current zoning, which is on, in green on the left and also yellow. Future land use is identified as Ranchette in tan and that is what they're proposing to rezone to. Here's another visual for you. We do look at current zoning within one and a half mile. You can see that on the left-hand side of the screen and future land use is on the right. We do look at roads and streets, infrastructure. So, Schmitz Trail is a forty-foot wide access easement. It is fourteen-foot gravel and asphalt millings. Infrastructure consists of private water and onsite wastewater treatment. The request was sent out for interdepartmental review. There were no objections or concerns received. Staff's analysis of the request is that the applicant is proposing to adjust lot lines of the subject properties in order to create lots, one revised, two be revised, and two are of Barbara subdivision, and that is happening through the city of Rapid City. This is within the three-mile plating jurisdiction. The request for this, this specific request is for lot two R, which I have highlighted on the screen. There's a green star on it. The existing lot is here on the right and you can see what they're proposing on the left. The previous lot line is this dashed line right here. So, that's six acres, does meet the minimum lot size of five acres for a Ranchette zoning district. Existing infrastructure meets a minimum requirements for that proposed district and approval of this request will allow them to proceed with the city of Rapid City. Staff finds no significant issues with the applicant's request, as it appears to be in harmony with existing zoning and future land use in the area.
I move approval?
Second.
Motion from Hatcock, seconded by Ross Connect to move approve. All in favor say aye?
Aye.
Opposed, same sign, hearing none. Motion carries on B. Ms. Brittany?
Item B is Public Hearing of Comprehensive Plan Amendment, C O C A twenty-five dash zero-zero-zero-nine, for Shane Schreiner, to amend the comprehensive plan to change the future land use from rural residential district, suburban residential district, and highway service district to commercial district. And staff is recommending to continue, C O C A twenty-five dash zero-zero-zero-nine, to the November fourth, twenty-twenty-five Board of Commissioners Meeting.
So moved.
Second.
Have a motion from Hatcock, a second from Drews. All in favor say aye?
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Item C.
Item C is Public Hearing of Rezone, C O R Z twenty-five dash zero-zero-one-zero, for Shane Schreiner, to rezone from Agriculture District, Suburban Residential District, and Highway Service District to Commercial District. And staff recommends to continue, C O R Z twenty-five dash zero-zero-one-zero, to the November fourth, twenty-twenty-five Board of Commissioners Meeting.
So I move.
Second.
Motion by Drews, seconded by Hatcock. All in favor say aye?
Aye.
Opposed, same sign, hearing none. Motion carries. And we'll move on to item seventeen A. Doty Fire Protection District, Appointment of Vacate Director per S D C L thirty-four thirty-one A. The board will be considering the appointment of a vacancy on the Board of Directors for the Doty Fire Protection District. Jordan, do you know a little bit about this, sir?
I do, and it looks like we also have some people from the fire district here who could also speak to this, but I'll quickly go through what I put down in my memo. This was requested by the Doty Fire Protection District because per S D C L, we we were required, you were required as a board to make this appointment for their Board of Directors. So, they had a vacancy created back in July by the resignation of Karen Hoffman, and now you need to help them appoint a new person. There are three people who were interested and they provided letters of interest for your, for your review. We had invited each of them to attend. One of them couldn't make it and I don't know about the other two, so I'm not sure if you'll be able to actually speak to the applicants directly. But I believe, oh, we got at least one. Okay, we've got at least one. And so, I guess it's all how you wanna move forward with this appointment. The, the current board is looking for an appointment as soon as possible because the vacancy has been in existence since July. They're hoping that maybe they can get a decision today if you feel that you've got an appropriate applicant.
So, we have letters of interest from Cole, Had, and Voight. And who's here today?
Brett, Brett Had.
Brett Had.
Brett Had's here today? Okay. And the other two couldn't make it today? Okay, so.
Mr. Chair.
Which is, yes?
Yeah, I'm gonna make a motion to appoint Mr. Had.
Chair, I'm gonna make a substitute to appoint Jessica Cole.
I was.
Need a second on my first one.
Oh, sorry.
I'll second Jerry's motion.
We have a motion from Dur, a second from Ross Connect to appoint Mr. Had. Now, did you have?
Substitute for Jessica Cole.
A substitute for Cole. And we have a second on that motion? I will second that motion for, for Cole. So, I guess, have a conversation about the substitute motion. If the substitute motion fails, we go back to the original motion, so.
Chair.
Yes.
So, I recommended Jessica isn't the last one that went off on this board, a woman as well, and I think we need more in the fire service. I think Jessica does a wonderful job. I don't think Fred and Kurt do, don't do a great job. I just think we need more represent, representation for women. I also asked for recommendations from people that were in that area or on the board, and they thought all three were good candidates, but they thought Jessica Cole would be the best candidate. So, it wasn't just my recommendation, I checked with the people that are on the board. So, I've been on the fire board for nine years.
Any other comments on the motion on the floor?
Mr. Chair.
Commissioner Drews?
I understand that this has not been a normal process for us, even though it's part of statute to be done this way. And so, this is something apparently fairly new to this commission, at least in recent years of, of doing this upon a resignation like this, so.
Yeah, I, there has been some conversation going on back and forth about it and the state statute commands that the commission appoint a position for this position. And it's kinda weird. I mean, we've had some other ones that came up too, so.
No, I find it odd because you think it would be the board that would do the appointment, their board, not us.
Right. But it's not the way it is, so Jordan's done the due diligence on it.
And, and they did as well in, yeah, in many other districts that is kind of conflicting in legislature, because you look at like the sanitation district, the remaining members appoint the vacancy. It's the same thing with pretty much all other boards, except for a few, a few stragglers out there that the Board of Commissioners has to appoint.
I said they're all three good, but they already have.
I think anybody who wants to volunteer their time and that's the importance of the commission making a decision. Communication I got was that Ms. Cole was appropriate for the position and I will support her, so. But we have a motion on the floor. Is any more discussion on the motion?
You might wanna repeat that motion.
It's to.
You're talking about the substitute motion right now, right?
Right, the substitute motion is to appoint Jessica Cole in that position. So, does everybody understand that? Okay, so let's, let's, let's vote on it. All in favor say aye?
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
So, motion fails, three-two, right? So, it goes back to the original motion to vote for Commissioner Had. Okay, so, everybody understands we're voting for Commissioner Had now, right? Commissioner Had. So, all in favor say aye?
Aye. Aye.
Opposed, same sign? Just have?
No.
Okay, so four to one, so. Motion carries. The appointment will go to Mr. Had, so. And we move on to item number seventeen. B, which is library contracts. Jordan, I'm gonna lean on you a little bit to explain this one a little bit. I think we're looking at, because we've made it a big adjustment and we have some time constraints on how long we have available to, to, um, to basically dismantle this contract?
So, essentially what happened is we have already in effect terminated the contract with Rapid City Public Library because per sub-paragraph four of the termination clause, we failed to provide adequate funding for the contract as it existed. And so, to meet the letter of that termination clause, we must provide them with sixty days advanced written notice before January first to make sure that we, and we give that also to the city council. And so, we have not provided that written notice yet, and so I just need authorization.
This would be the last opportunity we have to do that.
It has to be done by the end of October. This is the last meeting that we would have before that October thirty-first deadline. So, I also wanted to just take the opportunity, because all the other contracts are written exactly the same. Now, we're, we're meeting the obligation, the financial obligation of those other three contracts, so nothing has to be done to them right now. But if we were going to be entering negotiations with one of the libraries, we may want to also do that with all the others. We do not have to cancel their contracts, though, to enter negotiations. We can amend those, we can always change them. It doesn't have to be, cause we're not tripping any trigger there. But for Rapid City Public Library, we do need to terminate that contract effectively, otherwise we could be held in breach of contract.
We could be held liable for the, so, right. Okay, I get it, okay. Does everybody understand that?
Yeah.
And comfortable with making a motion?
And, yeah, Mr. Chair, what I would say outside of the Rapid City Library is the language in those agreements needs to be rewritten because it speaks to, you know, the three percent that they get every year. And again, there are things changing that, with our revenue coming in and those types of things, and so I would say that we need to hit all of them at the same time and not piecemeal it out, so I'm gonna make a motion to cancel all three agreements.
Okay, so we're gonna motion to cancel all the agreements?
Four.
One, two, three, four agreements? A motion from Dur and a second by Hatcock to cancel all four agreements with the premise in mind that we're renegotiating all of them, so.
Correct. And, yeah, after that motion, if it is successful, I just need guidance from the board on how you guys want to proceed with negotiations, because I can start drafting something, we can reach out to all the different boards and try to figure out a good time for everybody to meet, and we can do it publicly, or I, I just need direction after, if this.
Yeah, and I appreciate, I appreciate that. We should give you some pretty concise direction on, on how, we'd like you to reach out and, and renegotiate the contracts. I think some of the concerns are the automatic increase that's, you know, tied to those contracts, so. I think they could all be fairly similar, so. I mean, if anybody has some input into that for Jordan.
Mr. Chair, if we cancel those agreements today, I'd like to at least have some kind of a timeframe that we address the others so that these libraries have an idea where they're going funding-wise.
And we're not changing their funding. The funding's been set in the budget, so we're not gonna change their funding. We just have to, we just have to, and that's important that you bring that up, cause somebody might hear this in the audience and think we're gonna change their funding. That's not, the only one that we're changing is, which has been voted on, was the Rapid City Library. So, the other ones haven't changed, but that won't. So, what kind of time do you need realistically?
Okay, yeah, and the reason I would almost have preferred that we cancel the agreements is just in case we don't get it done by the end of the year, but I, there's, there's no reason we couldn't get everybody on board and on the same page by December. So, I'm thinking we could have something back before the board.
I understand all the time constraints too. You're in the middle of moving, you guys are packing stuff up, so. I think, would that be, so, would you guys okay with that?
Yeah, and my other comment related to this is, you know, we don't, we have a library levy that says what the levy's gonna be used for, and we don't necessarily require, you know, signed agreements with the individuals that we're funding. And, you know, there is a point to it, though, that if you have like an M O U or something and you say that we're giving you twenty thousand, thirty thousand, that you will use it for, you know, the intended purpose, so. But again, I think the caveat here is that we're not taking away anything that's been budgeted. It's just working so we get to a point for twenty-six budget that we know where we're at.
Right, and I think it all plays into the overall global picture of, of wanting to get all the contracts in one location. So, like, you know, eventually we're gonna take all the copy machines, everything into have, so it brings us more ability to, you know, leverage going forward, and we have an understanding, or if none of, one of us are gone, then another commission would come in and go, eh, we know where all this stuff's at.
Chair.
So, Commissioner Hatcock, you have the floor?
So, I'm, I'm in agreement with what we're doing, but we do have about a hundred ninety-seven in reserves, if I'm correct. Jordan, something like that?
Anticipated, yeah.
Anticipated, so that might be able to, for this year, be able to be used for this coming year instead of taking from eighty-one to, I mean, that's, that's not a hundred thousand dollar hit, that's a pretty substantial hit. So, I also would like us to look at using some of that reserve for that library, depending on how those negotiations go, and make that, you know, part of the negotiation, or at least have the conversation about what that means to our county with them, with the city.
And for one point of clarification as well, just so that everybody's aware, they don't even receive their first payment from us until after we collect the taxes, so they wouldn't even be anticipating this money until May of twenty-twenty-six. And so, we do have a little bit of leeway to make sure that we've got a good contract in place, but I don't anticipate it taking too long to negotiate something.
Thank you, Jordan, for all your work on this.
Mr. Chair, so when we renegotiate these contracts, are we, do we meet with representatives of each library so that they can give testimony and?
Well, I think what we're, yeah, I mean, at some point, we're gonna have to have some kind of draft that we're gonna approve, that we can say, yep, and it should be uniform, I would think, fairly close to uniform, and then we can, I think, once he drafts that up, he can bring it back to the commission in a timely manner, and we can approve the draft and have our discussion about how that may work, I think. And then, then we'll localize everything, so we have all the library contracts in one place, so, you know. I think it moves forward to the overall global picture of, of how we need to operate in the future, so when.
Done in open meetings when we're doing it as well.
Right, so, and I think, is that clear understanding for everybody? So, we have a motion from Dur to cancel all the contracts, and who was the second?
Me.
Commissioner Hatcock was the second, so all in favor say aye?
Aye. Aye.
Opposed, same sign, hearing none. Motion carries. We're gonna move on to item number seventeen, letter seventeen D, but I was originally requested a executive session meeting to.
C. C.
Yeah, don't skip. I'm sorry, C. Oh, the hours of operation resolution.
And so, I can explain this a little.
I tried to slide that one by the goalie, I guess. So, sorry about that. Jordan, you have the floor?
Yes, of course. So, essentially, this is gonna be just what I would prefer we do as a cleanup motion or a cleanup resolution. I don't have exact language that I feel needs to be here, but per S D C L seven-seven-two, the Board of Commissioners shall by resolution establish the hours of operation for each county government office excluding the sheriff and the state's attorney. Our current resolution is going to be out of date after we've moved to concourse, and we've already changed those hours of operation by motion, and so we just need to do some work to actually clean up a resolution. And in my mind, it's not that I don't like the current resolution, it's that it's a little more detailed, and anytime any one of those details changes, we'd have to republish a whole new resolution. So, I was thinking of maybe stripping it back and kind of hitting just the, the bare minimum, the letter of the law, and so that's why I kinda put forth a draft resolution, but I'm not, definitely not married to that, it's just, it would be shorter, more concise, cleaner, and it doesn't reference specific buildings, it doesn't reference offices that It doesn't reference, uh, offices that aren't going to be covered by the resolution. It just really shortens everything up and makes it a little bit neater, um, but.
Some of them by law are, have their own authorities, so. Commissioner Haddock, you have the floor.
On the seasonal, I would like that taken a look at, because the difference on the seasonal for highway and weed and pest. I mean, it doesn't have to be, and other counties do it, when it's seasonal, um, areas for hours of operation. I think that should be in consideration on this resolution.
Okay.
Thank you.
What we're looking for is, is see what kind of ramifications it would have.
You bet.
Seasonally, like if in the wintertime, we went to a five-day work week for the, uh, the roads instead of a. Does everybody understand that? Instead of a four-day, that maybe it would eliminate some of the overtime that.
In the county.
That's, that's not on this, so.
Do you have to make a motion on this?
You don't have to.
Okay, thank you.
I, I've got the direction. I'll come back with another one next meeting.
All right.
Okay. And then, so we don't, there's no, nothing required here?
Correct.
Okay. Okay, so we'll move on to seventeen D, and then, is Tyler here? He was gonna, he requested a, um.
Executive session.
There he is, executive session. This, we're on seventeen D, the point of county auditor, and wanted to talk about personnel issues according to SDCL.
One twenty-five, two, one. I'm going to make a motion to go into executive session pursuant to SDCL 125 dash two, one, for the purposes of discussing personnel matters.
Second.
We have a motion from Dur and a second by Haddock. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries, we're in executive session.
I'm moved.
Second.
Motion by Haddock, second by Dur to come on to executive session, and we'll move on to. I know this is seventeen D, right?
Yep.
So, James, um, I didn't forget about you, sir.
Have we got a vote on that? We got a motion and a second?
Speaker.
He, we have a public, he wants to speak, he wants to.
Okay.
But a motion.
No, you're fine, you come up.
We need a vote on coming out of executive.
Yeah.
Oh, I'm sorry. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. That, we'd have really thrown AI off on that one.
I'm always thrown out.
All right.
Well, don't let anybody ever accuse me of not holding you to account. All right, so, I know we just came out of executive session, and I think my first point of contention has to be the fact that it's not on the agenda. Uh, nothing came up to put that on the agenda. It was done before the item was even brought up. And I have some questions, and I'm going to leave a, a minute to respond to any answers I get. The first is.
We'll give you some flexibility, sir.
I, I'm sorry.
We'll give you some flexibilities.
All right, thank you. Um, the first is, I have a copy in my hand of Cindy Muller's retirement or resignation letter, um, that's dated October 7th. Now, law requires that she submit that to the commission, and if you just want to respond, when that was submitted to the commission?
I think the law requires it to be submitted to the auditor's office, but I'm not positive about that.
Jordan, do you know?
And then the auditor presents it to the commission. So she had to essentially resign to herself and then gave that letter to my office on October 7th, after our meeting for that day had adjourned, and I sent it to individual commissioners that day, on October 7th.
Okay, so it was done after the meeting had already.
Yes.
Transpired that day.
Yes.
Okay, so that.
Yeah, it came in after our meeting of that day, you're right.
That, that's what I want to establish, a timeline, so I know what happened when.
After, it came in at five o'clock that night, if I remember, it was after the meeting, because that was a question from one of the commissioners.
All right, thank you. So then the next thing is, I see two executive sessions. One on the 9th and one on the 14th that transpired. Now, when somebody comes out of executive session, they're required to disclose all votes. And from what you said earlier, you then called or tried to start vetting candidates, which you must have made a decision in one of those executive sessions. But nobody made that decision public.
We didn't make any decisions in the executive session, so do you mind me answering?
Yes, please.
Yeah, no, we made no decisions made in executive session. We still haven't made a decision.
And that's what I'm trying to figure out, because you said you started vetting candidates. So somebody made a decision to call, vet candidates, and that decision must be public on the record. And just like today, we had the fire district, who you courteously went over similar qualifications publicly. That is not happening here, from what I see in the auditor's complaint. And that's all I'd like to say about that, besides the other thing that I have an objection to, that if we're thanking somebody for 25 years of private, public service, should it not be disclosed that it's due to criminality? If there's a criminal complaint, why are we thanking somebody for dedicated service?
I'm not, don't know what you're talking about, so.
Because there was a criminal complaint filed, and just so you know, to this date, October, August 5th, public records have not been released. I would, I tried to view them under 127 dash one, and they were denied. A written request was also denied. The, the funny thing is, the records I requested are mandatorily available to the public. My question is, have they been destroyed since they haven't been released?
I'm not even sure what you're talking about, Mr. Bellato, so.
I know.
I don't know if anybody else can answer that question, or, and I know you asked for an extra minute for the questions, so we're allowing that.
Are you talking about the auditor report and then what we sent, or what?
Yeah, in fact, I came to the commission before and said the auditor had denied public access to public records. And this is a huge issue.
That was something.
Because it's required by law to make them available to the public versus a FOIA, which is a written request. Both requests were summarily denied, and these records are deemed public in the codified law, some of which are the FOIA requests themselves and any responses. And I asked to see those FOIAs and the responses, and was subsequently, and still to this day, denied, when that is a matter of public record that must be disclosed to the public.
So you filed a Freedom of Information Act form, and it.
In August.
And, oh, so you filed it in August. Who did you file that with?
The auditor.
Okay.
And I asked for in-person inspection on the 5th of August. It's October.
I don't know how that was.
There's a 50-day civil penalty for not disclosing them. And we, we've seen these issues, and I got to bring up the fact that in the county records, I was put out for tax deed after I had already paid my taxes on time. And so I have a huge question.
I'm going to start wrapping up, I'm going to give you 20 more seconds, sir.
I have a huge question on how the auditor missed the fact that people had been paying their taxes, yet the tax book said they weren't paid.
This is unlikely.
And I had to bring in receipts to show I had paid in cash. They had made that money essentially disappear off the books.
Thank you, Mr. Bellato.
Thank you.
You have a good day, sir. Okay, so we're moving on to item seventeen.
So, Mr. Chair.
Yes.
I'm going to make an emotion to appoint Sabrina Green as the Pennington County Auditor effective November 7th, 2025, at the rate established in the county's elected official resolution, which is 91,000 annually.
We have a motion from Dur.
I'll second that.
And a second from Drews for, can we have a discussion on that motion?
So my discussion is, um, in the past, when we appointed auditor, or I'm sorry, treasurer, HR, and even the state's attorney, we do our due diligence and we use the best practices of the county. By doing that, um, and appointing somebody, I think that needs to be done, and that was not done with this appointee. So in this case, and the appointee knows for me, that, um, I won't be voting for that person to be appointed until that is done, because the best practices of this county is to treat everybody the same and not appoint somebody else any different than we would any other elected official or appointee of this county. So, uh, for me, without knowing all the information, you guys already know by due diligence, I cannot, in full disclosure, seeing red flags and other things with this issue, that, um, I can agree with this appointment. Thank you.
Okay, any other comments on the item? So let's, let's go direct and do a vote, roll call vote. So, all in favor?
Aye.
Dur?
Uh, yeah.
Aye.
Drews?
Aye.
Haddock?
No.
Ross Connect?
Aye.
Waif and Bach?
No.
So it passes three to two, so congratulations, Sabrina. You will be appointed to the auditor's office at a salary of 91,000, correct?
Mm-hmm.
So, um, and that'll be effective on the.
7th of November.
Was it 91 even or 91 eight?
Ninety.
91 even.
91 even?
91 even, so, um, congratulations.
Tried to give her a raise already, huh?
You know, she's in my office.
Oh, yeah, she's, yeah. Okay, um, so let's go to item 18. Items from chair, commission members, a time for individual members to bring forth ideas and concerns to the full board. Official action will not be taken on these items, so I guess we'll just go down the row and start with Gary. You got anything you need to talk about?
I have nothing, no.
And then we'll go over here, we'll go to Ron.
Mr. Chair, last week, we attended a Zoom meeting with South Dakota Association of County Commissioners, and we looked at different proposals that's currently, uh, being talked, talked about at the summer study. And tomorrow will be the fi, final summer study. Uh, we're not taking a position on any of those, because we haven't got enough information yet, but, uh, at least we know what's in the hopper.
So you didn't come up with a solution that.
Well, my, my goal was to be reduced property tax by 50%, that's my goal.
I got that. Commissioner Dur, do you have anything?
No, I don't.
Okay, Commissioner Haddock.
So, just to, um, we had started, me and you and Jordan, with that contract with the, um, two, well, was it two, um, city council people and library, um, where is that going to go? Are we going to do it upfront? What are we going to do different? Because I know we were supposed to meet with them, um, soon. Are we moving forward with the same committee on that? Or are we going to do some of this, uh, stuff upfront where, um, we're talking about the contracts? I'd like to know, just for, um, I'm also planning a trip, so I also know, like to know where we're going in the future with some of that.
Mr. Chair, Deb and I did attend a Pennington County housing redevelopment meeting last week, too, just, just, just a business meeting.
That's a good committee to be on, they really do, they do a lot of work for the.
We're kind of talking about the library, though, Ron? So, thanks.
Okay, so, Jordan.
So if I understood the, not the, it was an emotion, but the kind of will of the board is that I was going to bring back a draft at the next meeting.
You printed out, you posted a summary and emailed it to us, right?
A memo, yes, but, um, and so I can bring back a draft of what potential issues I see with the contract to the next public meeting. And then from there, the board can get an idea of what they like and what they don't like about the existing, well, no longer existing contracts. And then you can head towards negotiations and decide when you want to meet with each of the four boards. Because we do need to meet with each of them to discuss what they would like to see.
If you come up with a draft, and then you can bring it back, and then we'll, you know, look at the draft.
I can do that for the next meeting, yeah.
Okay, so, Commissioner Haddock, do you have anything else on that?
I don't, I just need to plan a trip, so it needs to be soon.
You know my trips are frequent, and, I mean, they're.
Well, I've been waiting to, to do that, and now I think I'm, I'm ready to move forward on that. And I just don't want to be caught in meetings or missing meetings and stuff that are crucial for us to move forward on. So thank you, Jordan.
I, I just want to make a comment. I think we're moving, making some headway. I think that there's always room for improvement on our process and procedures, as long as we follow up on them and we're making sure we're doing, you know, the best we can for the county and the people as a whole, that we, we revisit some of these things we've had conversations about, and, um.
Main thing is that they're consistent process and procedures that we do here at the county.
Well, and, and sometimes, you know, I enjoy having people come up here and challenge us when they have public comment and that type of stuff. Like, that keeps us sharper, keeps us on our toes. I mean, we try to do the best we can with, uh, Robert's Rules of Orders and, and running our, our businesses. But if, you know, if people want to challenge us on it, that's, that's awesome. Um, I think that's an important part of the process of people, um, you know, practicing their, their rights to do that. We've found out a lot of stuff about the absences of auditors, what happens in a case if we, if we lose an elected official. Say we lose a treasurer, we lose an auditor, we lose a sheriff. Uh, all these people are deputized by that office, and, and the commission holds the responsibility to, uh, take that power away from them if they so choose. So there's been some good things that come out of it, and, uh, you know, obviously, we'll have one more meeting before the auditor's last day. But I do know, I want to say that we've been working very hard and very diligently with the city and trying with, with Rapid City and Box Elder. We've been meeting regularly to try to come up with opportunities to synergize anything that we do, so we're not overlapping. And some of those things you'll see expose themselves and within our budgets and stuff, going, hey, man, you know, we're really better at this than you are, and then you should take it. And one of them is the opiate, uh, trust fund that's sitting in at the state. So if you have any state legislators out there, if you have any influence, if you can, uh, give them a little nudge to head our direction, what we're looking to do is build a state-of-the-art facility here for mental health and opiate addiction in Rapid City and Sioux Falls. And it's going to take a big chunk of that money to do it. They're, right now, they're just sitting on that money, on those funds, just kind of dripping them out like a faucet, which doesn't do anybody any good to attack our overcrowding in our jails, our addicted populations on the streets, those types of things. So I would just like to reiterate that, we're working really diligently with, uh, the city council and, uh, you know, the, the sheriffs have been, uh, very instrumental in that procedure, too. So I think that it, this could be a big, big, big thing for our community if we can get this off the ground and head it in the right direction. Not only will it, it help with our addiction problem, but it'll help with our jail, and it'll also help with our budgets, so.
Well, that being said, that's all I can think of right now, and, uh, looking, attaining a motion to adjourn.
Mr. Chair, one question for Jordan.
Also.
We have executive session.
You have one more executive, but, yes, sir.
Oh.
So, our next meeting, is that here?
Yes.
In this building?
Uh, yeah, we'll make sure that we get a PSA put out to the public as well. November 4th's meeting will be here still. The commission office technically will have moved the day before out to concourse, but we won't have the chambers ready until the second meeting in November. So November 4th will be here, November 18th will be the first meeting held in the new chambers at concourse.
Okay, just wanted to confirm that.
So I'll entertain a, a motion for contractual penny litigation or personnel per 125, two, three, um.
125, two, one, it's for personnel.
Two, one, okay. Okay, I see, okay. So, we have a motion from Haddock, second by Drews, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries, we'll be in executive session.
I'm going to command of executive session.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to command of executive session, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries, we have a motion to adjourn.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to adjourn, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
We are adjourned, gentlemen and ladies. Have a great day.